Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of the Lordy and Morse Parade, Montecarlo Rock. The acronym is ANPAC, or Chief Judge of Counsel Court. Today is Class 138, Class 138. What did we learn in Class 137? Well, as you know, ANPAC's study session is being an educational platform was trying to give Dr. G a little bit of irredition, right, regarding what? Regarding jurisdiction, right? Keep it in mind that jurisdiction is about state rights, right? States oversee territories, right? And if a state can oversee a territory, that means they control the laws and the courts of that territory. So in Class 137, what we were learning is called jurisdiction. But jurisdiction is tied to a state, and the state gets to control the laws and the courts over its people, its inhabitants, right? The population within its borders, right? So in Class 137, we started breaking it down, you know, because Dr. G said that she wants to help the people to unite, right? Well, the question is to Dr. G was, okay, Dr. G, under what jurisdiction are you trying to unite the people that way we could move forward, right? So when we started learning in Class 137 is technically three jurisdictions right now that the people, our people in our community are talking about, right? And what are the three jurisdictions that our community is talking about? We're talking about being Moroccans in Morocco. That's one jurisdiction. That's a state in Pabroco for Moroccans, right? What was the other jurisdiction we talked about in Class 137? It was the United States of America and its citizens, right? That's a jurisdiction. And what's the third jurisdiction we talked about in Class 137? Well, for example, the Cherokee Nation, right? All these are jurisdictions, but keep in mind jurisdiction means state. So you got the Empire Morocco as a state, United States of America as a state, and you got the Cherokee Nation as a state, you see? But always remember, in that scenario, who has sovereignty, right? Who's the sovereign, independent, external state? Who's the parent state that has jurisdiction over all those states? Was the Empire Morocco. Empire Morocco has jurisdiction over the United States of America. And United States of America has jurisdiction over all Indian tribes, right? So the question to Dr. G is if she's trying to bring us all together to unite and move forward, okay, Dr. G, under what jurisdiction? What jurisdiction, what state are the people going to unite underneath? Because you can't choose all three jurisdictions. You have to pledge your allegiance to a state. And that state has to turn around and accept your application to return to said state. If you're going to remain a naturalized Moors subject of the United States of America, then stay right there as a naturalized Moor. However, if you're trying to become Cherokee, you got to go register with the Cherokee Nation. If you're trying to become Moroccan in Morocco, you got to register with a Moroccan state. So therefore, in Class 137, we were learning about people calling themselves Indians, right? Now, let me just say this for the record. A lot of people right now are starting to wear feathers, right? So you got Moors wearing feathers, and you have Moors wearing fezzes. You got Moors wearing feathers, you got Moors wearing fezzes. You see, the feathers is not the problem. The problem is, when you put on feathers, you're trying to say that's an association to being Indian. That's the problem. The feathers is a Moors headdress. It's not an Indian headdress. You have to understand that the feathers is a part of our history as a people. Think about the Egyptians. The Egyptians always talked about feathers, right? When you look at Egyptian mythology, it talks about Anubis, right? Anubis had the scales, and Anubis would weigh your heart to see if you could get into the hereafter life, right? Life after death. And Anubis was responsible for having the scales to put your heart on the scale along with what? A feather. To see if your heart was as light as a feather. So the Egyptians were always talking about feathers all the time, right? They loved to talk about hawks and eagles, buzzers, you name it. These were all sun gods and all types of god. They prayed to everything. But over in Africa, the Africans wear a lot of feathers, right? When they're doing their dances and stuff, right? You look at the Moors garb, even the Europeans recognize Moors as wearing feathers on their heads, as headdress. So now you look over here, what's commonly known as the West, and now you see people wearing feathers. Well, I hate to tell you, but feathers has nothing to do with Indians. First of all, the word Indian is a non-degire, it's a misnomer that was applied to us as a people. But you must always remember that the Mongolians, right? The Mongolians from Asia crossed from Mongolia into Russia, and from Russia over into this continent. And the Mongolians, i.e. the Eskimos, right, were wearing furs, not feathers. I'll say it again, the Mongolians were wearing furs, not feathers. So by the time they came into this landmass, even deeper, going southbound, they bumped into Moors wearing what? Feathers. You see? So that culture started to intermix with Mongolians and Moors. But now, as of present day, you would think the pale-faced Indian was the one who came up with this concept of feathers, and that's just not the case. We have intermixed cultures. So what Moors have to understand is, it's okay to wear feathers, but the problem is when you associate it to the word Indian, then that's a misconception. Because when you wear feathers and say the word Indian, that's a political designation when you put feathers and Indian in the same conversation. And the reality is the feathers belong to the Moors. That's our culture. So if you want to wear feathers, you still need to wear those feathers under a Moors concept and not saying it's applied or associated to Indians. That's where we're making our mistake. The feathers is not the problem. It's the words you're associating to, you see? So this is what we have to take away from that. Feathers is not the problem. Please, by all means, wear your feathers. But the question is, under what jurisdiction? What jurisdiction? Let's take it to the board. Are you going to wear feathers as an Indian? In jurisdiction to be a Cherokee Nation, understanding that Cherokee Nations come under the jurisdiction of the United States of America? Or would you rather wear feathers as a Moor, as a Moroccan wearing feathers? Remember, Moors always wore feathers. So that's a Moors headdress of the Empire Morocco. But when you wear feathers and associate the Indian, that's a different political jurisdiction. So the feathers is not the problem. You can wear feathers as a so-called Indian, or you can wear feathers as a Moor of the Empire Morocco, because the reality is, the dark-skinned people that call themselves Indians are actually Moors. This is what we got to take away from the feathers versus wearing a fez, because you got Moors out here now. I've seen images and pictures of them. They were wearing fezzes. Now they're wearing feathers. Guess what? It's the same headdress. It all belongs to the Moors. All right? So today, I want to continue on with Part Two. Part Two, right? We're going to keep talking to Dr. G. Dr. G, I know you have a call for unity. So what I'm going to do is continue to give you a little bit of irredition. That way, you can start understanding and making the distinction between truth and falsehood, right? Because we all know that truth and falsehood is strangely mixed, right? So we got to keep talking about this, Dr. G. We got to separate the two, right? We got to find out what's the truth versus what's false, all right? So we'll keep digging in a little bit deeper. Today, I'm going to dedicate this Part Two to you, Dr. G. All right, let's go ahead and jump on into the class. As everyone know, I always open up the Constitution. Constitution is paramount. Why do I always say it's paramount? Because when you look at the Charter of the United Nations of 1945, Article 73, right? Under Article 73, in its preamble, the first paragraph mentions the word paramount. What's paramount? Was paramount for the colonial administrative state that's overseeing a non-self-governing territory, right, of the Moors? Because the Moors are not governing, because they didn't put together their three branches of government. So now the colonists is overseeing the Moors government's land. So the colonists have an overlay called administrators. And they're overseeing the territory of the Moors, and they're overseeing the Moors themselves, so both the territory and the Moors. Called territorial jurisdiction and personal jurisdiction. The Europeans, i.e. the United States of America, is maintaining a colonial trust status over the Moors and the Moors territory as administrators. And in the Charter of 1945, Article 73, it says that it's paramount that the colonial administrative state that's overseeing a non-self-governing territory starts to assist the natural inhabitants of the land. And who are the natural inhabitants? Moors, right? I.e. Moroccans. So therefore, in that first paragraph of Article 73, it says it's paramount to help the natural inhabitants. Why is it paramount? What does paramount mean first, right? Meaning you have to put the indigenous people first, because it's their land. That's why they're first in time, right? So since it's their land, and the colonists are foreigners in our land, that means colonists come second. And the colonists have to put the natural inhabiting people in the first position. Why? Because the indigenous people are the true sovereigns of the land as people, and the land itself is sovereign. So when you're talking sovereignty, the question is, who has seniority? Well, it's the colonized people have more seniority than the colonizer themselves. But the people don't know the proper name to use in order to decolonize, then they're going to remain what? Either subjugated as naturalized people, or they're going to turn around and declare themselves as being some other names such as Cherokee, right? Instead of returning back to the Empire Morocco, which is the original name of the land, you see? So this is what we have to learn, all right? So let's move on. Let's get into the class. All right. So like I said, today is Part Two, with opportunity to talk to Dr. G. Dr. G has a panel coming up. She'll be talking to this young lady named Raffir, who claims to be an Indian. She'll be talking to Tashri Bay, Abdullah Il-Talib Mosse Bay. She'll be talking to Lamont Il and Yakuba Il, right? April 26 through the 28, 2024. But guess what, Dr. G? You don't have to wait to April to talk about the truth. Let's just talk about it now, shall we, right? They got to give your panelists something to talk about in April, but I'll go ahead and have the conversation in March, if you don't mind, all right? So let's continue on. Okay, Dr. G, what do I have up here? I have a YouTube channel called Unscrambled Minds, right? So shout out to Unscrambled Minds. They have about nearly 3,000 subscribers. Recently, they had their brother Abdullah Bay, right? Their brother Dooley on there. All right? The name of it was, "Do You Know Who You Really Are? Part Two: With Abdullah Il-Talib Mosse Bay," right? So make sure everybody go to their channel and subscribe, show them some love. So with Abdullah on here, Dr. G, Abdullah is starting to sound the alarm. He's starting to let all the Moors know that all the Moors have been miseducated. Why am I making this a point, Dr. G? When you say you want to bring people together to unite, well, the first thing you have to do is identify what we're doing wrong. We can't unite under misconception and miseducation. We have to first identify what we're doing wrong, that way we can move forward and do it right, right? So good brother Abdullah is going to tell you what we're doing wrong, all right? He's going to tell you he's been miseducated for 25 years, Dr. G. And who was Abdullah's teacher? Taj Tariq Bay. Therefore, if Abdullah's saying he was miseducated, that means you also, Dr. G, was miseducated, along with all the other Moors, right? Don't believe me? Let's listen to Abdullah. All right, here we go.
You speak about the Treaty of Granada for Protection. Is there any other treaties outside the Sun 1790 Sun 17 Act and the Peace and Friendship Treaty? Were there any treaties of Moors signed here in the Americas?
You have the 1856 treaty, general treaty between Great Britain and the United States, because those treaties also protect... Let me ask you a question, brother. Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
All right. And the treaties, brother? You've read wherever the Moors' dominions are or British dominions are. So wherever the dominions are, the British sovereigns were protected. Whatever the thing is, the Moors were protected.
Okay, okay, okay.
So because the Moors empire was...
Okay, okay. I think you'll bring great clarification if I get a question.
All right.
I think we would have to, can you please identify the Moors for us? Where are the Moors' origins coming from?
All right. Today, today, because of European mass denationalization, Moors have been classified as Indian, Black, Negro...
Where are their origins? Where are their first existence? Where are their Aboriginal indigenous roots?
Where you were born and raised. Where you were born and raised.
I'm from the America. I'm a coastal Indian. My family was...
Where you were born and raised. North, Central, South America. North America, Central America, and South America.
Okay, appreciate that answer. My next question would be, can we find Moore in the Constitution? Because I remember you talked that Moors started and created the Constitution.
All right. That, I love it. I love it. I love it. I'm not, no, I know. Let me, all right, let me answer that. Let me address that. You're going back five years ago. I did teach that. I did. That's in my book. That, what you just said is in Moors and Maids League, Part One. That's a misconception that I taught for 25 years. I have admitted that countless times. I'm saying tonight, I did teach for 25 years that we, the people of the United States, in that preamble, are the Moors. I did teach that. I was in error. That was a misconception. I am man enough. I have said it 100 times. I'll say it 1,000 times more. I did teach that. That's on tape. He got me on tape. That's on tape. It's in my book. That's a misconception. I have evidence to prove otherwise. Moors are not part and parcel of the United States. Moors are not we, the people, in the PM or United States Constitution. Moors are not the founders of the United States Constitution, all right? I did teach that, though. That was a misconception that I, that was taught to me, that I had taught to thousands of people, and I'd go in the bed crying. I have cried, because I taught that misconception to thousands of people for 25 years, and I've cried and cried about that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I understand.
I'm giving up, fuck, man. I'm not...
I respect that now. That's a real man, and that's a real man. It's honorable, and I learned a lot of things from you. So I appreciate that. My next question would be...
So as you can see, Dr. G, good brother Abdullah is letting all the Moors know he was miseducated for 25 years. He started all his tutelage with who? Tashri Bay. And now Abdullah's coming out saying he was miseducated for the first 25 years of his studies. Therefore, if Abdullah was miseducated, that means all the Moors will miseducate. That's including you too, Dr. G. Because Tashri Bay is Abdullah's teacher. And Tashri Bay is also your teacher, Dr. G. Tashri Bay taught Kujo Il, so therefore Kujo was miseducated, right? Sharon, right, who goes by Yasharon now, she was miseducated, right? Light Bay was miseducated. Jamal Bay was miseducated. Moreno Bay was miseducated. All the Bays, all the Ls, Days, Ali's, right, and Il's are all miseducated, because Abdullah's ringing the alarm. What happened with Abdullah? He started studying what? International law. And he found out that we have been studying international law this whole time, we could have fixed this problem a long time ago. Abdullah's letting everybody know, we are not Americans, and we're not Moors Americans. We are Moroccans, period, in Morocco, right? So it's not just me saying that we've miseducated. Even Abdullah's saying, the man's saying, he literally cries at night, because he miseducated the Moors, because of his miseducation that he learned from Tashri Bay. But let's not forget, the other Grand Sheiks as well, right? Grand Sheiks, National Grand Sheiks, Supreme Grand Sheiks, they're all teaching the Moors misconceptions. They're teaching all the Moors that we are the true Americans, and that's a lie. The reality is, our treaty say we're Moroccans in Morocco, and we were supposed to be decolonizing in order for us to run governments in our own home land of Morocco. And that's the truth. So that's the first step, Dr. G. How can we unite when we ain't even right about the education that we have learned over the past decades from all the Grand Sheiks? You see, Dr. G, the problem is the leadership. We've all been miseducated. And this is why I say ANPAC Study Session is an educational platform to teach the truth about what? International law and the fact that our nationality is Moroccans in Morocco, and that's what Abdullah's teaching too. So shout out to Abdullah. All right. Who else we got up next, Dr. G? Listen, we got to fix this first. You can't go forward unless you fix it, Dr. G. You cannot unite unless you're right about your intentions of moving forward with the right information, Dr. G. Who we got up here? This is good sister Yasharon. Now, why am I showing Yasharon? It's because she has course corrected, Dr. G. Yasharon was selling packages for the Moors American consulate. She was Moors American diehard. And guess what she's done? She started studying international law. She started watching ANPAC Study Session. So now she's coming out, now she's teaching international law. She don't call herself a Moors American no more, Dr. G. She knows it's all about international law and statehood, and all the Moors have to come back to a state, Dr. G. This is Yasharon. All right? So let's listen to Yasharon, Dr. G, for about four minutes. All right?
And if a will shall appear, the property shall descend, agreeable to that will, as soon as the consul shall...
So let you know, she was talking about the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, Article 22, right? Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1787 and 1836, right? So I'm catching on the tail end and talking about the treaty, but listen to what she's about to say next.
...that will. All they require an ability of is that will, right? If there is a will to be present. Well, what does the Treaty of Peace and Friendship represent? It represents a contract. It represents an agreement. It represents a trust document, because it's telling you, right? And this is how they declared jurisdiction over the Moors in the Moroccan empire, because there's no Moroccan nation at that particular time to receive it. Article 22. Now, we talking about a 1952 treaty. I mean, 1952. We're going to get into the United States versus France case, because it's a very awesome case, because this is what clarifies things to Moors, where you fit into in the world of international law, where we fit in the world of international law. We fit, or Moors that have not done their due diligence, declared their independence through their statehood, and have established the certain, and followed the certain protocols that were established in order to establish statehood. Well, then, you're still subject to the United States jurisdiction. And that's because we sit here and think everybody's supposed to do our work for us. There's 190, I'm going to keep saying this until it gets in your thick head, there's 193 states that are member states, and they're just member states that have said, you know what? We're going to come together, we're going to be adults, we're going to unify, and we're going to establish these Moroccan governments all over the so-called 59 governing trust territories, and start establishing and running our own land with the aid of the international community. Well, how do you get the aid of the international community? There's certain protocols that have to be followed. Those protocols don't originate, those protocols don't originate from the UN Charter. They don't originate there. They originate from the treaties that gave the UN its authority to be established. And the Moors have been absent on that international stage as an independent state, because we've been capitulating as Moroccan subjects, Moors subjects, Moors Americans, proteges, and a protege is somebody who gave their oath and allegiance to the state. You understand what I'm saying? So we're apart, we sit here and make it seem like we're being violated, because people just don't like us. We're being violated, because they came over here, all these different, all these different countries, all to build and establish wealth on our land, because the United States invited them through the treaties that they've established against our behest. I don't even know what word that I want to use, because the reality is, the United States is operating, the United States is operating as an intergovernmental organization for this non-governing territory. Well, this one is no longer. Pennsylvania is no longer. There's about seven, there's a lot of Moroccans who are getting it, who are accepting the downloads of knowledge, the downloads of information, who are accepting it, and not sitting here thinking that you can be outside of government, or outside of nation-state building, or international law for over 288 generations, to sit here and say, okay, this is how we're coming back. This is the audacity of our people. We're coming back this way. Well, our treaties, Moroccan treaties, for which the United Nation is established based on, is telling us, well, how the heck, we sit here, keep talking about everybody's warring against us, everybody's talking junk about us, everybody hates us. No, we the only ones that's not coming in right. Back to nationality. Decolonization Act. Then you got that. Oh, my God, that's another international document.
So as you can see, Dr. G, I'm just going to pause it there. Yasharon's talking about international law, right? She's new at it. She's stumbling through it a little bit, but she's trying, right? She's got a long way to go, but she has course corrected. She's no longer calling herself Moors American. Always keep in mind, who was her first teacher? Tashri Bay. So now she's over here talking about international law, international law, international law, Dr. G. So when you say you want to bring us together to unite, well, the first question is, is under what jurisdiction? Because as you can see, even Yasharon's saying, we're Moroccans in Morocco. We got to enforce our Moroccan treaty to establish Moroccan states and start to understand the provisions of the Charter of the United Nations. So that means that if her teacher, Tashri Bay, and none of the Grand Sheiks are talking about the Charter of the United Nations, none of the Grand Sheiks are talking about we have to create states, Moroccan states, and constitutions? That tells you that she knows she's been miseducated. Did you hear what she said? She says, "We the ones that ain't doing it right." She knows that now, Dr. G. So we can't unite under misconception and miseducation, all right? You got to understand that, Dr. G. You don't have to believe me, contact Yasharon. All right? Okay, check this out, Dr. G. I'm trying to give you some irredition. This next video I'm going to show you is about statehood. It's about stateless people. When the Grand Sheik's Tashri Bay says, "Oh, we're not citizens of the United States." Okay, my question to Tashri Bay is, or anybody, whether they call themselves Indian or Cherokee, what state recognizes Tashri Bay as a Moroccan of the state? Tashri Bay's name is not on the state registration of any Moroccan state. You got Rare Bird on your panel. She hasn't registered with the Cherokee Nation and its government? Neither have you, Dr. G. Tell me the name of the state that you registered with, Dr. G. These are the questions we have to start asking ourselves. It's about jurisdiction, and jurisdiction is about statehood, Dr. G. It's not about what your mouth say, right? It's about what does the state recognize you as being? Does the state recognize you as one of its own? So we're going to learn about this young lady. She's about 85 years old, and she's stateless. And she's been trying to get her home state to recognize her, and they won't recognize her, and she has proof as to who she is, and the state still won't recognize her. We're talking recognition from a state, Dr. G. Listen to me. No matter what you say your nationality is, the question is, does the state recognize you? Are you on the registration of that state? Just because you say you're Italian means nothing. Doesn't Italy recognize you as Italian? That's the question. Okay, let's watch this video. It's about four minutes, Dr. G. You can learn a lot from this. Okay, first of all, it's what Japanese descendants in the Philippines struggle for citizenship, all right? That's what this is about. Japanese descendants struggling for citizenship in the Philippines, meaning that Filipinos, the Philippine Islands won't recognize people who are Japanese, even though they was born on that island or around the surrounding islands of the Philippines. So the Philippines don't want to recognize this young lady as being Filipino. And then where her father's from, which is Japan, Japan won't recognize her as Japanese, because she was born over here near the Philippines. because she was born over here near the Philippines. You see? Watch this.
...is about people born in the Philippines to Filipino women and Japanese men who immigrated before or during World War II. Many were left behind when their fathers were killed or deported to Japan. And even now, at least 151 people remain stateless, seeking Japanese citizenship. NHK World Sakai Noriyuki reports.
Eighty-four-year-old Haluko Perahia Oshiko Diawna was born on the southern island of Mindanao. She was left behind in the Philippines with her family after her father was sent back to Japan.
We had nothing to eat. Our neighbors didn't help us and we were isolated.
Japanese people began immigrating to Mindanao 120 years ago. In the prior years, over 20,000 Japanese used to live in the island's main city of Davao. But after the war, a Japanese foreign ministry survey shows at least 3,800 children were left behind. Haluko says she suffered discrimination and oppression as a child of a country many Philippine people considers an enemy. Her family moved to a mountainous area in a bid to hide themselves. Haluko later married a Philippine man and raised six children. Her wish now is to obtain Japanese nationality. A Tokyo-based nonprofit organization has helped Haluko acquire this status. It recently discovered strong evidence of her identity. It found reference to Haluko's family in a list of civilian internment camps from the Pacific War. There was also a photo of six-year-old Haluko. Her father's name was written beside it, along with a clear statement that she is his daughter. With this evidence, Haluko filed for nationality status with the Japanese Family Court in R.A., June. Japanese descendants have made repeated requests for procedures to obtain Japanese nationality to be simplified, but no comprehensive measures have been put in place yet. The Japanese consulate general in Davao is working to move things forward. This year, it began joining an NPO to interview descendants. On this day, they visit an eighty-four-year-old man. He has longed to be recognized as Japanese for more than twenty years, but has not yet found necessarily proof.
I truly want to help confirm the Japanese identity of those who have suffered so they can fulfill their wishes.
In the Philippines, nearly 100 Japanese descendants have died in the past year. Their avalanche age tops eighty-sleeve and time is running out. Sakai Noriyuki, NHK World Manila.
Alright, Dr. G. So what do we take away from that video? Well, here it is, this young lady, she even has documentation, even a photo that says her father's Japanese. And Japan still won't recognize her as Japanese. You see, no matter how much she says she's Japanese, Japan still don't want to recognize her. So what do we learn from this, Dr. G? You see, if the state don't recognize you, then it make no difference what you say your nationality is. A state must recognize you, Dr. G. This is the problem with the Moors. All the Moors are quote-unquote "stateless" if they say they're not citizens of the United States. The question is, what citizenship do you have or what other state? Tell me the name of the state. You say you're Moorish American, where's the Moorish American state? There's no such thing. There's no constitution for the Moorish American government, there's no three princes government. First of all, that would be identity theft because you can't say you're American when Americans are the citizens of the United States of America. You have to come up with your own nationality if you're trying to say you are a distinct citizen of a different state. So what we learn from this, her mother's probably what? Let's say Filipino, but the Philippines don't wanna recognize her. Even she took a blood test, the Philippines like, "No, we're not gonna recognize you because your father is what? Japanese." Then she goes over to Japan and say, "Will you recognize me as Japanese? Because my father was Japanese and I got paperwork to prove it." And Japan says, "No." Why? Because Japan don't like what? Potentially the Filipinos. So now she's stateless. No matter what her blood pedigree is, no matter what her genealogy is, it makes no difference. If a state don't recognize you, then you don't have no nationality, therefore you are stateless. This is what the Moors and the so-called Indians gotta understand, Dr. G. Soon as you see Top Cat, Rod Hayes, Dane Callaway, Young Elder, Rare Bird claiming they're Indians and they say the name of the nationality, you ask them, "Does that state recognize you? Does the Cherokee state recognize you as Cherokee?" And the answer is, "No." So therefore, either Rare Bird is stateless because she's claiming to be Cherokee, but the Cherokee don't recognize her, or she's still a citizen of the United States of America. And the reality is, she's just a citizen of the United States of America, faking it like she's Cherokee. That's the reality. However, if she says she don't recognize herself as a citizen of the United States and the Cherokee Nation don't recognize Rare Bird either, immediately she becomes what? Stateless. You see? That's what's happening right now. The Moorish Americans, right? Speaking of that, let's take a look at the top of the board. Check this out, Dr. G. We are not Indians, because Indian is an adjective, right? Over here in the West, but over in the East, India, Indians, that's a noun. But over here in the West, Indians are adjectives, right? So we are not Indian as an adjective or Moorish Americans, which Moorish American is also an adjective. It's a compound adjective because of that hyphen, right? So people call themselves Moorish Americans, Dr. G. That's not a nationality because there's no state called Moorish American. Therefore, Moorish Americans turn around and say, "I'm not a citizen of the United States." Okay, you just became what? Stateless by your own decree. There's no state called Moorish America. This is what we gotta understand, Dr. G. We run around with fictitious nationality cards, saying, "I got nationality card." Then you look at the nationality card, what does it say? A Lodeo American. You might as well just should've kept your social security number and birth certificate because the United States is like, "Duh, we already know you're American because you're still a citizen of the United States of America." You gotta understand, this is miseducation. This is what Abdullah's talking about, Dr. G. Let's learn a little bit more about stateless people. Let's learn more about the obligation is to have documentation. Listen to me, Dr. G. You have to have documentation to prove your nationality. You must prove that a state recognizes you, right? Let's take about eight minutes, Dr. G, and listen to this. This is very profound what you're about to listen to. Alright, so this is YouTube. The title says, uh, this is TEDx, by the way, TEDx Talks. Uh, everybody go back and subscribe, etc. "I am thirty years old and a month ago I got my first passport." That's the name of it. "I am thirty years old and a month ago I got my first passport." Check that out, okay? Alright, listen. Matter of fact, before I get started, let me give you a quick brief, Dr. G, because it's eight minutes. This young lady is gonna come out, okay? Now, she was stateless until she was thirty years old, alright? Now, she'll turn around and tell you she was from Syria, right? Her father's from Syria, but she was born in Lebanon. And then she ended up getting her nationality recognition from Brazil. I'll say it again. Her father's Syrian. She was born in Lebanon, but ended up having to get recognized by Brazil because she couldn't get recognition or nationality from the Lebanese country. And she couldn't get nationality card or state ID from Syria. So she ended up becoming stateless when she was born in Lebanon because the Lebanese people wouldn't recognize her. She was a stateless person for thirty years until Brazil opened up their borders and allowed people from Lebanon to get recognized as being Brazilian. So what am I saying? See, it had nothing to do with pedigree. It's got nothing to do with genealogy. The question is, what state recognizes you, Dr. G? In her situation, we'll learn more about her. Brazil recognized her as Brazilian even though she's from Syria and was born in Lebanon, but Brazil recognized her. Therefore, now her nationality is what? Brazilian, even though her blood pedigree is from Syria. Although she was born in Lebanon, she ended up getting a nationality card, i.e. state recognition, from Brazil. So you got these fools running around talking about, "What's your pedigree, Taj? What's your genealogy, Taj?" And see, it don't always have to do with your bloodline. It's about what state recognizes you. This is why Maxine Waters, listen to me, Dr. G. This is why Maxine Waters, who's a citizen of the United States, is trying to get quote-unquote "black people" to say they're Cherokees because the Cherokee Nation can do what? Adopt. Moors, who are actually Moroccans, they're being adopted as Cherokees and the Cherokee Nation said they're adopting these Moors. Therefore, this young lady also that we're about to find out about, she got adopted by the Brazilian country. The state recognized her. It had nothing to do with bloodline. This is what you gotta understand, Dr. G. Stop falling for the banana and the tailpipe. Everybody keep talking about DNA. It don't always have something to do with that. It's about what state recognizes you, Dr. G. I cannot express this enough. It's about jurisdiction. Jurisdiction is about the state that recognizes you. Then you come on those laws and the court has jurisdiction over those laws. Alright, listen, Dr. G. This is an interesting story.
I'm thirty years old and a month ago I got my first passport. For most people like you, it's just a technicality. A document in the shape of a small book with colored cover that allows you to travel. But for me, it was life. It was a sign that I belong somewhere. You know why? Because I lived my entire life as a stateless person. Do you know what stateless person is? A human can get her or his nationality two ways. From the land where you were born or from the bloodline. Take Italy. If you're born in Italy, you're not Italian. If your parents are, then you can get the Italian passport. But millions of people around the world have neither option, like me. I was born in Lebanon. Lebanon gives you nationality only if your father is Lebanese. But my parents are Syrian, my mom is Muslim, and my father is Christian. When they decided to get married, in Syria, the interreligious marriage is illegal. So in 1985, they went to a neighboring country, to Lebanon. They tried to get married there. They could just have a marriage as a church ceremony, but never registered it. Soon after, my sister, my brother, and I were born. Neither my mother nor my father could confer onto us their nationality. We were born as stateless people. For us, it was a normal life. We're gonna live it and then we're gonna grow up. We didn't even know what are the challenges and problems waiting for us. The first problem we faced was in school. When my mother wanted to register us in school and she had to beg every single director, she went to three schools and we were denied because the first question they asked her, "Who are they? Where are the documents?" As we didn't have anything, they just turned us away.
Let me pause right there, Dr. G. This is what's happening to the Moorish Americans. Moorish Americans are running around with fictitious nationality cards, thinking that it represents some type of statehood status. And then Moorish Americans get upset when the civilized nations of people who actually are recognized by states start talking to Moorish Americans and Moorish Americans try to enforce some fictitious document onto a state official or onto some state type of school, like she said. She could not go to school because the school says, "Where's your state ID?" And Moorish Americans run around with some nationality card from RB Bay Publications, which is an e-commerce website selling fictitious cards. But RB Bay Publications is not a state. And Moors are getting caught up thinking that RB Bay Publications is telling the truth because Tashri Bay endorses RB Bay Publications. So anything Taj says, everybody just believes it. What Abdullah's ringing an alarm, saying he got miseducated. So this young lady is finding out everywhere she goes, she must have what? State ID. And this is why she's stateless. The Moorish Americans are stateless when they keep using identification cards that did not come from a state. You gotta understand what's happening here, Dr. G. It's about registration. She's gonna keep using the word "registration" and "documents." You gotta pay attention. Alright, here we go.
Then luckily, in Lebanon, we had a civil war and not all officials were paying attention to the rules. My mom could converse another school and an Armenian school accepted us. So I started studying, the most beautiful one. Just like everyone else, same uniform, same teachers, and same education. I thought life is easy, that we don't have anything. If you look at us, we seems. Three teenagers, Saad, Eddy, and me. Three teenagers living their life, hoping and dreaming for a better future. But that wasn't the reality. Everything that you take for granted in your life, we didn't have. We were facing challenges and problems every single day. I have severe allergy. The name is urticaria. When it attacks me, I should run to the hospital to be attended. Unfortunately, the first question they ask, "Where are your documents?" Every time I should go, I had to take my best friend Nicole with me to be admitted under her name. I remember one day, Nicole showed me a passport, a vaccination passport of her own dog. Yes. Her dog had rights for medical care. I didn't, neither my brother nor my sister. The smallest thing that I used to live every single day reminded me over and over that I'm a stateless person. Going to buy a SIM card or going to a club to enjoy with your friends? The first question, "Where is your document?" As I don't have anything to present, then I couldn't do it. Imagine if I needed a credit card or health insurance? That was kind of impossible. I really wanted to be a basketball professional player. I'm not that tall, but I'm really fast. I had the skills, but not the magic documents. The biggest fear we had was just walking on the street and seeing a checkpoint because every time I see a police checkpoint, I have to run to the other side because I don't have a document to present whenever I be stopped. When I finished school, I really wanted to study. I wanted to do medicine. I had the good grades. And then the first university I went with my grades, hoping that they could listen to me and to my case, the admission officer- The admission officer just took the documents and threw them on my face. He said, "If you're Lebanese, you can study. If you're foreigner, you can study as well. We're not joking here. Who are you?" Deep inside, I knew. That's a dream. That's impossible. I will never be able to study, but I really wanted to. So I simply put a list to all the universities in Lebanon. And I went one after one after one, begging and asking, "Please, I need to study." Until I found one. They accepted me as a favor and they told me, "Welcome. We don't have medicine, but we have management information systems." So I said, "That's okay." I started studying and I even went more. And I did my MBA degree and I graduated as master's degree. And now, what I'm supposed to do? I finished school. I cannot work. I cannot live. I cannot travel. What future is waiting for me? Would I dare to have kids and put them on the same situation that I am? Would I dare to dream? I had to choose. So I started sending my story. I wrote a card and started sending it all over the world. Inside Lebanon, to Syria, to everywhere, to anyone I could reach. And I got replies. Many embassies replied me. They simply denied me. I was refused to go. The only country that accepted my case was Brazil. But not because I was stateless. Because in two thousand fourteen, Brazil opened the door with a humanitarian visa for Syrian refugees. Again, the chaos of war helped me start a new life.
Going to pause it right there, Dr. G. Did you hear what she said on the back end? She said, "How did I get to Brazil to be recognized as Brazilian?" She said Brazil was opening their door to who? Lebanese people. But she's already told you in the eight minutes she was talking that she was not Lebanese. She's Syrian. But she was born in Lebanon, but Lebanon state didn't want to recognize her Lebanese. She couldn't go back to Syria and get recognized as being Syrian either. Why? Because she was born in Lebanon. So she ended up just sending letters to any state on planet Earth that would accept her. And Brazil accepted her under a special program for Lebanese. So now she's been recognized as Brazilian thirty years trying to be recognized by a state. See, it ain't matter what her bloodline was. The fact of the matter, she ended up doing what? Petitioning a state. And a state recognized her. And now she's Brazilian even though she has Syrian blood and was born in Lebanon, but she has a home in Brazil as being Brazilian. She was adopted as Brazilian, you see? So you gotta stop listening, Dr. G, to all these people keep talking about bloodline, bloodline, bloodline. Yes, that's a part of it. But that's only half the story. I showed you a story, Dr. G, about a young lady who's Japanese and she has documentation that her father's Japanese in Japan still won't recognize her. Dr. G, that's called blood pedigree. Her father put on a rap. She has to understand, Dr. G. That it's all about the state recognition. It's not our big mouth saying, "I'm this and I'm that." The question is, can you prove it? What state recognizes you? This is what Todd Shreve Bay and the Grand Sheikhs won't teach the Moors. This is what Farrakhan won't tell the so-called black community, "You ain't black." Black is an adjective. It's not a nationality. There's no state on planet Earth called black. We've been misled by our leaders. And I thank God for your brother Abdullah finally ringing the alarm. I, I'm thankful the good, good sister you're sharing starting to come out to teach international law. Dr. G, I'm telling you right now, all the Moors had to do was teach international law. All we had to do was study it, Dr. G. The, the cure to our problems, always international law. The Moors should have been exclusively, listen to me, Dr. G. The Moors should have been exclusively studying international law, day and night. The Charter been out since nineteen forty-five, Dr. G. Running year twenty twenty-four, it's been seventy-nine years, Dr. G. When have you ever heard the Grand Sheikhs read Article seventy-three of the Charter out loud? Never. When you ever heard Todd Shreve Bay read United Nations Resolution fifteen fourteen of the year nineteen sixty out loud? It's a decolonization resolution. It's been out for sixty-four years. Todd ain't never read it. This is why Abdullah's upset. Abdullah say he cries at night because he miseducated Moors for twenty-five years. You must understand it's about the state, Dr. G. So when you say you want to bring us together, the question I'm asking, Dr. G, is under what jurisdiction? Because the empire Morocco needs to recognize the people to be Moroccan. Or they're gonna be recognized as being Cherokees and come under jurisdiction still of the United States. But you can't be both, Dr. G. So we gonna unite as a people, as Moroccans in Morocco. So empire Morocco and the several Moroccan states can recognize our people as we start to return to the jurisdiction, i.e. the state. So we can be recognized by the state, Dr. G. Then we can unite and move forward, Dr. G. But you can't move forward with all three of these people in different statuses. You got Moorish Americans who are still citizen of the United States. You got Rare Bird who's faking it like she Indian, but let's just say she was Cherokee for the moment. Let's say she did register. Then you got Moroccans like myself and the other Moroccans of the Moroccan states right now. You got these one, two, three different jurisdictions, one, two, three, three different states. You know what these three jurisdictions can do? And all they can do is do what? Sign a treaty. But they can't work together as, as if they're collaborating as one people. You can only be one people under one state. You can't have one foot in this jurisdiction and one foot in a Moroccan jurisdiction. That's not the way it works. So you gotta understand, Dr. G, first we have to fix these misconceptions before we can unite. This is what AIPAC Study Session is all about. It's here to tell the truth, Dr. G. Alright, let's continue. In class one thirty-seven, Dr. G, remember I was talking about Maxine Waters? Maxine Waters is helping the quote unquote black people, right? Black. She's helping the black individuals. Remember in class one thirty-seven? She's helping the so-called black individuals to become what? To become who are quote unquote freedmen, to become what? Cherokees again, right? To become Cherokees. Remember in class? Class one thirty-seven. But Maxine Waters knows that the, that the Moors were being adopted. See right there, Dr. G, the Moors were being adopted to be Cherokees. They're not real Cherokees. So Maxine Waters knows if the Moors, Moors, i.e. Moroccans are being adopted by the Cherokees, then the question is, what is their original nationality? How is it the young lady that we've watched, who was, she knew she was born to a Syrian father. She knew she was born in Lebanon and she knows she ended up getting a nationality status from Brazil. How is it these so-called black people, check this out, Dr. G? How is it black people don't know what their nationality is? Everybody on planet Earth knows their nationality except for these so-called black people. But watch this, Dr. G. You see the co-intel pro of Maxine Waters in the United States? You see what they deal with the B? You see it's capitalized? See, the word black is an adjective. It's supposed to be a lowercase b, Dr. G. This right here is what you call a crime against humanity. This is criminality that the United States is listing as capital B as if it's a proper noun. As if it's a nationality. This is criminality, Dr. G. You see what they doing? They're playing games, Dr. G. You gotta understand what's happening here. Listen, Dr. G. Let me show you something. This is Etymology Dictionary, okay? Etymology Dictionary. Everybody right now, check it out, Dr. G. Everybody up here, these three statuses. Empire Morocco, United States of America, and then you got Indian Americans. Everybody up here, let's say, at once upon a time was calling themselves blacks. So you got black people who are now being placed their allegiance to a what? Moroccan state. So now they're Moroccans. Then you got black people, I'm using the word black intentionally, black people, because we all start off thinking we're black. Black people now say they're what? Cherokees. And then you just got regal African Americans calling themselves blacks still under jurisdiction, United States of America. But all three, one, two, three, all of us start off somewhat calling ourselves black. Would you agree with that? Yes. Watch this, Dr. G. I'm gonna type in the word black, but before I type in the word black and look at the definition of black, what's the definition of etymology, right? Let's look that up, Dr. G. Etymology, right? Okay. Okay, etymology, right? Etymology is a noun. Okay. Uh, your brother Joseph from the top.
Etymology, noun, late fourteenth century. Etymologia, facts of the origin and development of word.
Pause. Read it again.
Etymology, noun, late fourteenth century. Etymologia, facts of the origin and development of a word.
Alright, so etymology, Dr. G, and this is also for the quote unquote black community because everybody right now is gonna learn something ready to call themselves black, Indian, or Moroccan. Alright, fair enough, Dr. G? So check it out. So etymology, as you already know, Dr. G, right, is about the origin of words, right? So if that's the case, let's look up the word black. B-L-A-C-K. Black. Well, first of all, black is an adjective. You see that? However, see it's a vocative B, adjective. That's what black is in Etymology Dictionary. The first word is adjective. That's really what it is. However, can it be used as a noun? Well, it depends on how you're using it in a sentence. Okay, Dr. G. Check this out, Dr. G. Black. Now, I know this is generic information, Dr. G, but I gotta say this because you got people out there called Top Cat, right? Rare Bird, who's one of your speakers coming up. Rare Bird used to call herself black, now she call herself what? Indian. Right? So check it out, Dr. G. Uh, brother Joseph.
Black, noun, Old English, blank. The color black, also ink. From noun, use of black, adjective. It is attested from late fourteenth century as dark spot, excuse me, quote, dark spot in the pupil of the eye, end quote. The meaning, end quote, dark-skinned person, African, end quote, is from sixteen twenties. Perhaps late thirteenth century and blackamore is from fifteen forties.
Pause. Wait a minute, Dr. G, as you already know, but now we gotta school these people like Rare Bird, right? Rod Hayes, right? Dane Callaway, Top Cat, Young Elder, all these people used to call themselves black. Okay, let's look at the definition of black in Etymology Dictionary, which is the origin of words. So where are all these black, what was the black people's original name of a nationality? Nationality, Dr. G. Check this out. Black, noun, lowercase b. You see that, Dr. G? Well, Maxine Waters had to be capitalized. You see what the United States is doing? That's a criminal act. That's a crime against humanity. That's genocide, Dr. G. We gonna deal with them later on down the road. We gonna deal with Maxine Waters too. Check it out, Dr. G. So black people, show this to Rare Bird. Show this to Dane Callaway. Tell him to look these words up on YouTube next time they screaming and hollering about we Indians. Check this out. Who are the black people, Dr. G? They're what? Moors. You see that, Dr. G? They're Moors. Look at that. Etymology Dictionary says what? Black of Moors. So the blacks are Moors. Blacks are more, blackamores. So the blacks are the Moors because black is a complexion. It's an adjective. It describes the noun and noun is more. Moors are noun. You see? But they create what? This compound word, right? So it's blackamore. I know this is generic information. I know it's new stuff, but you got a lot of black people don't know this, Dr. G. And evidently, these people saying they're Cherokees don't know this about Etymology Dictionary either, that all the so-called black people are actually what? Moors. This is Etymology Dictionary. Check this out, Dr. G. Show this to, to, uh, to Rare Bird, right? Tell her to explain this, that she used to be black, now she saying Indian. But yet in the Etymology Dictionary, they say black is what? Moors. You see that? But they'll say, "We ain't Moors." That's not what the dictionary says. Listen, now I'm gonna click on the word blackamore, Dr. G. Check it out. Etymology Dictionary, blackamore. Check this out, Dr. G. And this is not for you, Dr. G. This is for all, this is for Rare Bird, Rod Hayes, right? Dane Callaway, Top Cat, Young Elder, and all the rest of these fools out here that's lying to the people with this propaganda that we're Indians. We're not Indians. We're Moors. I'm gonna use reference points to prove my case. Listen. Uh, your brother Joseph.
Blackamore, noun, end quote, dark-skinned person, black-skinned African, fifteen forties. From black, adjective, added more or additional more with connecting elements.
Alright, so the blackamores, the black, the blackamore is what? More. See that? Top Cat. That you used to be black, now you saying Indian? You're a more, sir. Rod Hayes, you're a more. Dane Callaway, you're a more. Blacks are blacks are Moors. Blacks are Moors, noun. Okay, listen, Dr. G. Now I'm gonna click on the word more. Check it out, Dr. G. See it's a capital M. See, black is a lowercase b. But over here, the Moors, capital M, that's a proper noun. This right here, black, adjective, is describing the noun. You see that? Watch this, Dr. G. This is for your panelists that keep saying they're Indians and they're not. Watch this, Dr. G. You see that? More, noun. You see that? Capital M, noun, right? Now watch this, Dr. G. See right here, Dr. G? So in Etymology Dictionary, they said the Moors are who? The blacks. You see that? Blacks. Guess who else are Moors, Dr. G? Negro. You see that? Negro. So blacks, be patient with, Dr. G. Blacks, blacks, and negroes are all what? Moors. You see that? Please have, uh, Rare Bird explain that. How Dane Callaway get around Etymology Dictionary? That the blacks are really Moors. This is why they call them blackamores. Did they ever say Indian? No. This is what you gotta understand, Dr. G. This is what we, we all have to understand, okay? That this is what it's all about. We have to understand that Moors are the people falsely, falsely referred to as black, okay? See right here, it says black. Black, but this is an adjective. Black is an adjective. That's Etymology Dictionary. Black is an adjective. Did they ever say Indian? No. This is what we gotta understand, Dr. G. We're being lied to by Maxine Waters. We're being lied to by the United States who keeps calling us black. They call us negro. But then they turn around and do what? Then they say, "Oh, you black people are really Indians." That's not true. Keep in mind, Dr. G, it was the Europeans who wrote this Etymology Dictionary. And they're telling the truth out loud, but our own people won't even go read, Dr. G. Tell Rare Bird and Dane Callaway, Young Elder, all the rest of these people keep saying we're Indians. Tell them to look up the word black in Etymology Dictionary. Look up the word more in Etymology Dictionary. Look up blackamore in Etymology Dictionary. It's gonna keep saying more, more, more. Look up black of moor in Etymology Dictionary, it's gonna keep saying more, 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 and you'll never. See the word Indian assess to the word moor. Let's continue. What do I have up here, Dr. G? This is Top Cat's fictitious book. It says, "I'm not black, I'm Indian." Well, first of all, Top Cat's. Black is an adjective. That's not a nationality. Indian is an adjective, that's not a nationality. So you got two adjectives up here that describes who? What's the nationality? You saying you're Cherokee? You should've put that on the front of your book. But the reality is, black people are what according to Etymology Dictionary? Moors. You see how in front of your cover is propaganda? It's false information, sir. Because Maxine Waters herself said that everybody that's dark-skinned calling themselves Cherokees are adopted. Sir. So on your book. "I'm not black, I'm Indian," that's a falsehood. That's a false statement, 'cause I just looked it up in Etymology Dictionary and said, "Anybody calls themselves black or negro is really what?" A moor. So why are you putting this falsehood on the front of your book? You need to take that book off the shelf and lie here, brother. Let's keep it real. "I'm not black, I'm Indian," that's BS. Let's continue. Check it out, Dr. G. Uh, good brother, uh. Dre from the top.
International Court of Justice reports of judgments, advisory opinions, and orders. Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. France versus United States of America, judgment of August twenty-seventh, nineteen fifty-two.
Alright, Dr. G, we talked about this a little bit in Class One Thirty-Seven. That at the International Court of Justice, in this case of nineteen fifty-two. This case, uh, was styled as. Says case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. So United States of America's in Morocco. United States of America is in, in Morocco, that's jurisdiction, Dr. G. So when you say we wanna unite, well, first you gotta understand that this state, United States of America, is in the jurisdiction. Of the Empire Morocco, you see that? And anybody standing there Cherokee, Cherokees are in the jurisdiction of the United States of America. United States of America is in the jurisdiction Empire Morocco, you see that? So when you say you wanna unite, the question is, under what jurisdiction, Dr. G? I don't know about you, but I'd rather have the highest status of seniority of jurisdiction, so you can control the laws and courts in the jurisdiction. This is so easy, Dr. G. So in this case. Everybody's in Morocco, including, guess who else is in Morocco, Dr. G? So-called Indians. Anybody calling themselves Cherokee is also in Morocco. 'Cause Morocco is the parent state, it oversees all states. That must be understood, so whether you call yourself a citizen of the United States of America or a citizen of the Cherokee Nation, both of these states are in Morocco. You must understand that, Dr. G. Okay. Let's talk, because these moors, these, these black people keep saying they're Indians. Let's see what Barack, Barack H. Obama said, right? President of the United States. On behalf of the United States of America. Right? Don't believe me, let's believe what the president said. Right? Listen. We'll listen to about thirty seconds.
I know that Islam has always been a part of America's story. The first nation to recognize my country was Morocco.
You hear that? Top Cat. Dane Callaway, Rare Bird. Young Elder, all the rest of y'all keep saying you're Indians. Barack H. Obama just said the first country to recognize the thirteen colonies was Morocco. Let's listen to it again.
I also know that Islam has always been a part of America's story. The first nation to recognize my country was Morocco.
You hear that? So when you're talking to your panelists. I'm talking about people keep saying they're Indians, Dr. G. 'Cause I'm trying to give you some irritation that way, when they sitting on your panel, you can start asking them questions. The United States is recognizing themselves as being in Morocco. So how you got people saying they're Indians when even the United States of America's standing there in Morocco? So therefore, the United States of America is in Morocco, then their natural inhabitants before the colonists got here are what? Moroccans. Moroccans in Morocco. Before the colonists showed up. Before Christopher Columbus got here, or miracle Vespucci, before the land was named America in fifteen oh seven. What was the name of the land before the colonists got here? It was Morocco. And Barack H. Obama's trying to tell you who recognized the thirteen colonies. It wasn't Indians, did he say Indians recognized? The United States of America? No. You know why the Indians couldn't recognize the United States of America? It's because Indians are what? Subordinate. The, the United States of America did not see Indians as they're equal. They saw Indians as they're subordinate. So you gotta understand why the United States of America couldn't be recognized. By Indian tribes. Not in equal status. That's number one. Number two, why else is the United States of America accepting recognition from the Sultan of Morocco? It's because the United States of America know they were where? In Morocco, not in Cherokee land. Not in Seminole land. Not in Crete land. Not in Choctaw land, none of this, it's all in Morocco. So you got these people faking it like they're Indians and they're accepting a subjugation status that even the United States of America and their citizens don't even want. You gotta catch what's happening. Listen, Dr. G. So Barack H. Obama, President of the United States, is trying to tell you. That the first country to recognize the United States was Morocco. 'Cause Morocco had the sovereign jurisdiction. Okay, what am I have up here? This is Wikipedia. So you can pull up these reference points for Rare Bird and Dane Callaway, et cetera, this is just, just brief stuff. Seventeen seventy-seven in the United States, this is a list of what happened in seventeen seventy-seven, okay? You come down, Dr. G. You come down, 'cause, 'cause Barack H. Obama said. Morocco recognized. The thirteen colonies. Check it out, Dr. G. So you come down to December, okay? Right here, December twentieth. No, can I have you read right here?
December twentieth, Morocco becomes the first country to recognize the independence of the United States.
Alright, read it again.
December twentieth, Morocco becomes the first country to recognize the independence of the United States.
Alright, so did it say the Indians? Were the first to recognize the United States of America? No. You gotta understand what's happening here, Dr. G, you talking about uniting us. We, we need to unite under what? The most powerful of sovereign status. Why would we accept a, a subjugated status of number three? When the United States of America looks up to the Empire Morocco? And they look down on Indian reservations? Y'all see what's happening here, Dr. G? Listen. We gonna do some reading tonight, Dr. G, get ready. Alright. What is this? All the moors know about this, but evidently, black people don't know about it, it's calling themselves Indians. Let's continue on with, 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 uh, Barack H. Obama was talking about, okay? Now. This is a letter from George Washington to C.D. Muhammad, which was the Sultan of Morocco, because Morocco's an empire. It covers over all types of, of, of continents, Dr. G. Now, obviously, my conversation, I'm talking to you, Dr. G, but I'm really talking to black people, as well as anybody who thinks they're Indian, to tell them about the moors' history that even Barack H. Obama's trying to tell you. I'll put Barack H. Obama up against Rare Bird any day. 'Cause he gonna tell you the truth. Listen, from the Dre from the top.
From George Washington to C.D. Muhammad, the first December of seventeen eighty-nine. To C.D. Muhammad. Since the date of the letter, which the late Congress by their president addressed to your Imperial Majesty. The United States of America have thought properly to change their government and institute a new one. Agreeable to the Constitution, which I have the honor of here with in closing of colony. The time necessarily employed in this arduous task and the derangements occasioned by so great. Though pieces of revolution. Will apologize and account for your majesties not having received those regular advices and marks of attention. From the United States, which the friendship and magnanimity of your conduct towards them afforded reason to expect. The United States having unanimously appointed me to the supreme executive authority in this nation. Your Majesty's letter of the seventeenth August seventeen eighty-eight, which by reason of the dissolution of the late government, remained unanswered, has been delivered to me. I have also received the letters which your Imperial Majesty has been so kind as to write in favor of the United States to the Vashas, Atunis, and Tripoli. And I present to you the sincere acknowledgements and thanks of the United States for this important mark of your friendship for them. We greatly regret tha- that the hostile disposition of those regencies towards this nation, who have never injured them, is not to be removed on terms in our power to comply with.
Paul. So read this sentence again, "we."
We greatly regret that the hostile, hostile disposition of those regencies towards this nation, who have never injured them, is not to be removed.
Right, Paul, so. Why is George Washington saying people are not to be removed? Because they're the indigenous people of the land. Who's indigenous people of the land? The moors, i.e. Moroccans, because that's who George Washington's talking about, saying, "We're never gonna remove the moors from this continent." Because all the moors are the subjects of the Sultan of Morocco. So George Washington is promising the Sultan of Morocco, he will not remove anybody from the territories. I.e. moors, he won't remove moors, okay? That's important to understand. George Washington's saying this to the Sultan of Morocco, who oversees this side of the West. Colony known as America, but it ain't America, it's Morocco. Always has been, always will be. Good brother from the top.
We greatly regret that the hostile disposition of those regencies towards this nation, who have never injured them, is not to be removed on terms in our power to comply with. Within our territories, there are no mines, either of gold or silver, and this young nation just recovering from the waste and desolation of a long war. Have not, as yet, had time to acquire riches by agriculture and commerce. But our soil is bountiful, and our people industrious, and we have reason to flatter ourselves that we shall gradually become useful to our friends.
Paul, so therefore, George Washington, he knows he owes duties, taxes to the Sultan. And he's laid on his payments. Right? So he's asking the Sultan to give him some more time to pay up. Continue.
The encouragement with, which your majesty has been pleased generously to give to our commerce with your dominions. The punctuality with which you have caused the treaty with us to be observed, and the just and generous measures taken. In the case of Captain Proctor, made a deep impression on the United States and confirmed their respect for and attachment to your Imperial Majesty.
Paul, so read it again from the top.
The encouragement which your majesty has been pleased. Generously to give to our commerce with your dominions.
Paul, so whose dominions? Is the Sultan talking about? So George Washington is thanking the Sultan of Morocco for allowing the thirteen colonies to stay in the dominions of Morocco. This is what Rare Bird and, and Dane Callaway not gonna tell the quote-unquote "black" people. Keep in mind, you look at the word black in Etymology Dictionary, it says black of moor. You look up the word moor in Etymology Dictionary, it says blacks and negroes. But these are really moors. Continue from the top.
The encouragement which your majesty has been pleased generously to give to our commerce with your dominions. The punctuality with which your, you have caused the treaty with us. To be observed and the just and generous measures taken in the case of Captain Proctor made a. Deep impression on the United States. And confirmed their respect for and attachment to your Imperial Majesty.
So therefore, the United States. The United States is an attachment. Is an attachment to who? Imperial Majesty, which is Sultan of Morocco and the Empire of Morocco. So therefore, the United States is an attachment to the land of the Empire Morocco. Thus the reason why, when you go back to the case. Right? You go back to the case. This is why the case reads as follows, good brother. Uh, from here.
Uh, case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco.
Paul, so if the, this case, if the ICJ, the case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. 'Cause George Washington in seventeen eighty-nine was recognizing they were in the land, the dominions of the Empire Morocco. And George Washington said in his own letter that the United States is an attachment to his Imperial Majesty, which is the Sultan of what? Morocco. So without Morocco, there is no United States of America. Without Morocco, there is no America. 'Cause America is recognized by the Sultan of Morocco, and without that recognition, there would be no America. We must all understand the history here that we're reading. Let's continue. Keep in mind, Barack H. Obama said the first country to recognize the thirteen colonies was Morocco. Good brother.
It gives me pleasure to have this opportunity of assuring your majesty that while I remain at the head of this nation. I shall not cease to promote every measure that may conduce to the friendship and harmony which so happily subsists between your empire and them.
Paul, read it again.
It gives me pleasure to have this opportunity of assuring your majesty that while I remain at the head of this nation. I shall not cease to promote every measure that may conduce to the friendship and harmony. Which so happily subsists between your empire and them.
So therefore, George Washington is recognizing that it's an empire. You see that? This is what Rare Bird, Rod Hayes, Dane Callaway, Top Cat, right? Young Elder, they don't want you to know that you're standing on an empire. The empire's over here in the West, the empire's over there in the East, it's everywhere, the moors expand around planet Earth. Don't get caught up when you see the word African, when you start reading books. Africa is just an extension of all other continents. The moors are on all continents. Stop asking the question, "Were y'all over here?" That's a stupid question. Right here, being George Washington, is saying he's standing in the dominions of Morocco, i.e. the. Empire. It's an empire. This is what Rare Bird ain't gonna tell all her followers, she ain't gonna tell them the truth, Dr. G, all she care about is making money. Her and Rod Hayes just wanna hit the cash app all the time, and I gonna show black people this type of information, Dr. G. I don't even know why you sitting there with them, you already know you ain't Indian, you know they're not Indian. We gotta stop this tomfoolery, we gotta stop this faking it, Dr. G. But since you gonna have him on your show, let me go ahead and hit him with this truth and these reference points off the top. That way, when they sit down with you in April, they already know what questions you gonna ask them. What Cherokee nation recognized them? Ask that to them, to Rare Bird, right off the top. Ask that to Rod Hayes, right off the top. Please show me your identification from the state called whatever Indian tribe you're claiming. Off the top. 'Cause they not gonna turn around and tell you that all these people calling themselves black is all sudden calling themselves Indians. Black means what? Moor. Not Indian. Let's continue.
In the course of appro- of the approaching winter, the national legislator, which is called by the former name of Congress. Will assemble, and I shall take care that nothing be omitted that may be necessary to cause the correspondence between our countries to be maintained. And conducted in a manner agreeable to your majesty and satisfactory to all the parties concerned in, in it. May the Almighty bless your Imperial Majesty, our great and magnanimous friend, with his constant guidance and protection.
Paul. Read that last sentence again.
May the Almighty bless your Imperial Majesty, our great and magnanimous friend, with his godly, his constant guidance and protection.
So therefore, the Empire Morocco is providing protections for the thirteen colonies. This colony known as what? United States of America. So the Empire Morocco has a United States of America in a protective stance. Now, the United States of America's turned around and colonized the Empire Morocco. But we ain't ever been Indians. That's a brand-new, subjugated status for moors to think they're Indians. We're not Indians. We're moors in Morocco that's been colonized by the United States of America. But the reality is, in seventeen eighty-nine, the Empire Morocco was providing protections for the citizens of the United States of America. This is what George Washington's saying, protections. You see that? Rare Bird not gonna tell anybody that. Rare Bird not gonna tell anybody that. Dane Callaway not gonna tell nobody this this information, Dr. G, okay? What's this second letter? Okay, now check it out, Dr. G, you already know this, but I'm talking to who right now? These people think they're black and black people think they're Indian, that's who, really who I'm talking to, Dr. G. But check it out, now watch this, as you already know, Dr. G. Now see Mohammed, the Sultan of Morocco, who recognized the United States of America and its citizens and put them on a protectorate status. Now he he does what? He dies, he transitions. And now Mohammed's son takes over, now he's the new Sultan and George Washington starts to freak out. Because he know the Sultan could just snatch that treaty away and now the United States of America won't have no more what? Protections. Now is George Washington asking for protection from Indians? No. He wants protection from who? Moors, which are Moroccans in Morocco because the Sultan is gonna make sure the Moors protect. The colonists back in seventeen eighty-nine, gotta catch what's happening. They were establishing in a friendship to keep the Moors from taxing the citizens of the colonies. Gotta see what's happening. Okay, now this one is seventeen ninety-one, right? So the last letter was seventeen eighty-nine, right? So now basically about two years later, now here's another letter that George Washington granted, right? Now listen to the tone of it, listen to the tone, Dr. G. George Washington, very, very concerned, from the top, uh, good brother, direct.
From George Washington to the Emperor of Morocco, thirty-first March seventeen ninety-one, to the Emperor of Morocco. Great and magnanimous friend, separated by an immense ocean from the more ancient nations of the earth and little connected with the po- with their politics or proceedings, we are late in learning the events which take place among them. And later in conveying them to, uh, conveying to them our sentiments thereon. The death of the late emperor, your father and our friend of glorious memory is one of those events which through distant attracts our notice and concern. Receive great and good friend, my sincere sympathy with you on that loss and permit me at the same time to express a satisfaction with which I learn the accession of sole worthy, a successor to the imperial throne of Morocco and to offer you the homage of my sincere congratulations. May the days of your majesty's life be many and glorious and may they ever even mark the era during which a great people shall have been most prosperous and happy under the best and happiest of sovereigns.
Okay, so now after you got through kissing all that, but now check this out, okay?
The late emperor, very soon after the establishment of our infant nation manifested his royal regard and amity to us by many friendly and generous acts and particularly by the protection of our citizens in their commence of their commerce and with his subjects.
Pause, read that again.
The late emperor, very soon after the establishment of our infant nation manifested his royal regard and amity to us by many friendly and generous acts and particularly by the protection of our citizens in their commerce with his subjects.
Pause right there. So George Washington admitting that the empire Morocco is providing protections for the Americans of the United States of America, that's number one. But also, the United States of America is getting into commerce with who? With the Sultan's what? Subjects, you see that? With the Sultan's subjects, you see that? We gonna come back to that word, let's finish reading the document, I'm going to come back to that word, okay? Cause Top Cats asked that question to Abdullah, right? Top Cats ac- asked the question to Abdullah, hey, where's the word more in the constitution of the United States? And Abdullah didn't tell him, but I'm gonna tell Top Cats today where he can find it in the constitution of the United States, alright? From the top.
The late emperor, very soon after the establishment of our infant nation manifested his royal regard and amity to us by many friendly and generous acts and particularly by the protection of our citizens in their commerce with his subjects. And as a further instance of his desire to promote our prosperity and intercourse with his realms.
Pause, so where is George Washington located? Okay, the word in, I'm listening.
And as a further instance of his desire to promote our prosperity and intercourse with his realms.
Pause, so whose realms? Whose land? Whose territory? Whose state? Is the state of the empire Morocco and the Sultan of Morocco and George Washington recognizing that the realms belong to the Sultan of Morocco and not to no damn Indians. This is what we gotta understand, is George Washington talking about Indians? No. He's talking about who? Empire Morocco, the Sultan of Morocco, then he missing the word subjects. We'll learn about the word subject, alright? Okay, let's continue from the top.
The late emperor, very soon after the establishment of our infant nation manifested his royal regard and amity to us by many friendly and generous acts and particularly by the protection of our citizens in their commerce with his subjects. And as a further instance of his desire to promote our prosperity and intercourse with his realms. He entered into a treaty of amity and commerce with us for himself and his successors to continue fifty years. The justice and magnanimity of your majesty leave us full of confidence that the treaty will meet your royal, uh, patronage also and it will and it will give me great satisfaction to be assured that the citizens of the United States of America may expect from your imperial majesty the same protection and kindness.
Pause, so you see George Washington is concerned, he's like, man, I hope the new Sultan will keep the treaty in place cause that's the only way the United States of America can exist on paper. Without the recognition of the Sultan, there is no United States of America. Therefore, there is no America, because Americas are made up name that the Sultan recognized, right? And what? A constitution, remember George Washington deposited constitution with the Sultan. That's how America was recognized, the Americans are recognized by the Sultan of Morocco because the Sultan of Morocco didn't care none about people calling themselves American, cause he knew the land was what? Morocco. And this is why George Washington is still talking about what? Protections, alright? Listen, let's start the word, the justice.
Uh, the justice and magnanimity of your majesty leave us full of confidence that the treaty will meet your royal patronage also and it will give me great satisfaction to be assured that the citizens of the United States of America may expect from your imperial majesty the same protection and kindness.
Paul, so you, George, George Washington still wants that protection, you see? Did he say he want protection from Indians? No. He wants protections from the empire Morocco as the land and he wants protections from the Moroccans, which are the what? Moors, cause more is an abbreviation of Moroccan. Protect them from who? The British. Gotta understand what's happening here, this is why the thirteen colonies who declared their independence in seventeen seventy-six. Then they were recognized by the Sultan of Morocco, December seventeen seventy-seven. He put them on the protections from who? Great Britain. Indians couldn't protect the thirteen colonies. It's the empire Morocco, the Sultan and the Moors. We're not Indians, we're Moors in Morocco. George Washington's talking about this. Barack Obama's talking about this. This is why Mitch McConnell wanted to make Barack Obama one-term president cause Obama is bringing up this history about who? The Moors and Moroccans in Morocco. Therefore, if he's bringing up, now he gonna do what? He gonna start talking about what? The empire Morocco. Because if Obama's talking about Moors and the fact that Morocco recognized the United States of America, he's talking about the empire Morocco, he's talking about the empire, not the kingdom. The empire is what Barack Obama was bringing up and Mitch McConnell didn't like that. It wasn't because Barack Obama's a Democrat, he don't care about that. He cared about the fact, Mitch McConnell was concerned about the fact that Barack Obama was talking about the empire Morocco. Listen.
Which the example of your illustrious father has taught them to expect from those who occupy the throne of Morocco and to have your royal word that they may count on a due observance of the treaty which connects the two nations in friendship.
So he's begging the Sultan, please man, recognize the treaty. Don't terminate, don't put us out the land. He wasn't begging Indians, he's begging Moroccans, continue.
This will be delivered to your majesty by our faithful citizen Thomas Barclay whom I name consul for these United States and the dominions of your majesty. And who to the integrity and knowledge qualifying him for that office unites the peculiar advantage of having been the agent through whom our treaty with the late emperor was received. I pray your majesty to protect him in the exercise of his functions for the patronage of the commerce between our two countries and of those who carry it on. May that God whom we both adore bless your imperial majesty with long life, health and success. And have you always great and magnanimous friend under his holy keeping written at Philadelphia the thirty-first day of March in the fifteenth year of our sovereignty and independence. From, uh, from your good and faithful friend, George Washington, by the President, Thomas Jefferson.
Well, Thomas Jefferson was biased, okay, see, alright, so, alright, so. As you can see, Dr. G, now this wasn't for you, Dr. G, this is for your your panelists who call themselves Indians. But I already showed you on the front end, these people call themselves Indians, used to call themselves black. And I show you Etymology Dictionary, black means what? Black or more. The blacks are Moors, Etymology Dictionary. Then you click on black or more, right? It takes you to what? The definition now starts talking about what? More. And the Moors under Etymology Dictionary are what? Negroes and blacks. These are nomdeers, right? Misnomers, these are brands, just like the word Indian. Indian is also a brand that was placed on the Moors to keep them from knowing their true nationality to keep them from understanding the sovereignty of the empire Morocco. If you tell people they're Indians, that mean they don't know that they're what? Moroccans in Morocco. See, the colonists don't want the Moors to wake up and emerge as a sovereign independent state. So you got these people on there saying they're Indians and they're taking the Moors backwards. They're deluding, deluding the people back to s- to s- to slavery, Dr. G. Anybody says we're Indian is deluding to slavery because you going from United States of America going backwards now going to some subjugated status of being Indian, that's going backwards, that's not going forward to emerge as the empire Morocco, Dr. G. And always remember that the United States of America is under the protections of the empire Morocco. Thus the reason why the ICJ sent the case about the United States of America in Morocco. Because Morocco provided protections for the United States of America, now remember, I said I'm gonna go this word subject, right? Okay, alright, now remember, I said I was gonna talk about this word subjects, right? Subjects, these are subjects of the empire Morocco, who the subjects, okay? Top Cats asked Abdullah a question, here you go, Top Cats, I'll answer it for you, here we go. Okay, Dr. G, alright, from the top, first of all, this is the constitution of the United States of seventeen eighty-nine which is George Washington's constitution, right? That was undermined by the United States Constitution of eighteen seventy-one, right? So both constitutions have similar language, okay? So now we're gonna read Article Three, Section Two, Clause One, alright? Okay, no more from here.
Article Three, Section Two, Clause One. Clause one, cases or controversies? Through ju- the judicial power shall extend to all cases in law and equity arising under this constitution. The laws of the United States and treaties made or which shall be made under their authority in all cases affecting ambassadors, other public ministers and consuls. To all cases of admiralty and maritime jurisdiction, the controversies to which the United States shall be a party. The controversies between two or more states, between a state and citizens and another state between citizens of different states, between citizens of the same state claiming lands under grants of different states and between a state or the citizens thereof and foreign states, citizens or subjects.
Alright, Top Cats, since you wanted to ask the question to good brother Abdullah where to say the word more in the constitution for the United States? Well, here is right here, Top Cats, it's called subjects, you see that? Now see Taj Reed Bay never talked this to the Moors. There Article Three, Section Two, Clause One mentions the word subjects. So any disputes that the United States of America had, this is about contract, contraries, excuse me. This is about dispute controversies, right? See this word between, Top Cats? Between, 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 you see that? So there's a controversy between two different parties, right? So who's the two party? Citizens of the United States of America or subjects, those are the Moors. The Moors are the subjects of who? Empire Morocco, the Moors are the subjects of the Sultan of Empire Morocco. See, Top Cats, but you don't understand this. In the United States Constitution, it recognizes three legal personalities, three. What's the first legal personality? Where it recognize who? Citizens, right, which is citizens of the United States of America, it recognize Indians and it also recognizes subjects. But see, they didn't wanna put the word more in there, they don't wanna put the word more Moroccan in there, they just said subjects, they use it like it's just a generic word, right? Just like the word citizen is a generic word. So citizens versus subjects, but let me prove to you the word subject means more, alright? Check it out, Top Cats, since you asked the question. What do I have here? Treaty, right, it's a treaty, treaty supreme law of the land, right? Keep in mind, I'm a judge, my job is to enforce what? The law. So treaty supreme law of the land, so let's talk treaties, Top Cat. Cause I just showed you a constitution of the United States, keep in mind, constitutions are a subject of international law. And treaties are a subject of international law, so right now I'm having an international law conversation with you, right? Constitutions are a subject of international law and treaties are a subject of international law, alright? So let me teach you something about international law. So this is the treaty of Madrid of July third eighteen eighty, right? Okay, this is a treaty that the United States of America signed with the Sultan of Morocco, right? So you got the United States of America, right, and then you got the Sultan of Morocco, you see that's a multilateral treaty, right? But then you come down here, Top Cast, to Article fifteen. Go to Article fifteen, Top Cast, go pull this up. I'm trying to help you out here, so you can stop asking ridiculous questions, but it's not your fault, Top Cast because you were miseducated by Taj to read Bay. Taj didn't wanna teach the Moors this, he still don't talk about this Article fifteen, check it out, Top Cast, okay? Uh, no more from the top.
Right of protection in Morocco, July third of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen. Any subject of Morocco who should, who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco, shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization. Choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. Foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restriction.
Alright, Top Cats, so when you ask the question, well, where to say more in the constitution of the United States? Well, it's what? Let's go back to it, it's what? That way you know, it's what? Article Three, Section Two, Clause One, the last word he uses is subjects. Controversies or disputes between citizens of the United States and subjects of Morocco. You see, Moorish subjects, Moorish subject, you see? So in Article fifteen, the treaty of Madrid, it says, any subject of Morocco, see the word subject? That's what's in the constitution of the United States. So all the Moors, right, Moors, see, the more, more is abbreviation for Moroccan. And the Moroccans come from what? Empire Morocco. So these are all what? Subjects of Morocco, who subjects? It's the Sultan's subjects. So therefore, the word more is in the constitution of the United States of America but is listed under a generic word called subject. And all the subjects of Morocco have been naturalized, see, Top Cats. You are a naturalized more, you're a naturalized subject. subject of Morocco, you're naturalized to be called what? American, but your true nationality, Top Cats, is Moroccan. But you've been naturalized, what does naturalized mean? Adopted, you're gonna learn about the word adopted today, a little bit more, Top Cats. And I'm talking to anybody else who used to call themselves black, now they call themselves Indian. You're gonna learn about the word adoption, 'cause you learned about that in Class one thirty-seven, I'm gonna go a little bit deeper today. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just blow this whole thing up, I'm gonna expose it all, that we're not Indians. So put on your seatbelt, pay attention. So therefore, Top Cats, you had an obligation to return to Morocco as a Moroccan and not as a dang on Indian. You're supposed to be going from here, Top Cats. You're supposed to be going from here, which is a jurisdiction of the United States of America, sir, and returning where? Returning what? Back to what? The empire, sir, the empire of Morocco. That was your obligation according to treaties and Treaty Supreme Law of the Land. But instead, Top Cats, you telling everybody to go from the United States of America on down here to be Indians, right? To be Indians, sir, instead of telling them to go and be Moroccans, i.e. Moors of the empire Morocco, you see that? This is treaties, sir, right there, shall return to Morocco, but Morocco is what? An empire, you see George Washington was using the word empire, sir. This you gotta understand, Top Cats, Dane Callaway, Red Bird, Young Elder, right? You guys gotta stop telling black people that they're Indians, and the reality is, black people are Moors. They're supposed to be returning to Morocco, but Morocco is an empire, but what's the problem, Top Cats? The problem is Taj Sri Bay and all the Grand Sheiks never took the time to put together what? The government of Morocco. So how is we gonna return to a government if the empire, empire government wasn't in existence? Right, we wanna talk about that, what's up with the empire, Top Cats? This is the problem with the Moors, they never established their own governments. Because the empire Morocco became void of Sultan after nineteen fifty-six. March second nineteen fifty-six, the Sultan of Morocco stepped down and left the entire empire void of an empire Morocco government. So how is the Moor supposed to return to the empire government of Morocco if there was no government? Now, I'm not talking about the Kingdom of Morocco well in, in the east. 'Cause that's the kingdom of Morocco that was established after nineteen fifty-six. I'm talking about the empire of Morocco, the empire of Morocco according to treaties, sir. Listen, you see this up here, Top Cats, and everybody else who thinks they're Indians, which is false information? We're not Indians, and we're not black, and we're not Moorish Americans either, we're Moroccans. Right now, Top Cats, we're in the, in the status right now of trying to restore the empire Morocco, because that's the treaty name. Not Kingdom of Morocco, but Empire Morocco, George Washington called it empire. The treaties called it an empire, not the, not the kingdom, so stop thinking kingdom and start thinking over here, empire, 'cause empire expands across the seven seas, Top Cats. You must understand that, the sun never sets on the Moorish empire, sir. Listen, so right now, Top Cats and everybody else who thinks they're Indians, but you're not Indians, you're actually Moors, you're supposed to return to the empire Morocco according to treaty instructions, Treaty Supreme Law of the Land. So this is what we're trying to put back together, Humpty Dumpty fell down, we're trying to put Humpty, Humpty Dumpty back up and put it back together again, it's in pieces, but we gotta bring it back together and make it whole, alright? So in the meantime, what are we doing, Top Cats? We'll show you what we got going on, Dr. G and Top Cats, Red Bird, we're establishing states. So we're putting together right now the United States of Morocco, what does that mean? All the several Moroccan states across the continent are coming together to now restore, right, to repair under post-laminium per consequenti. That means after you've been colonized, right, or, or you under capitulation regime, which is under war, if you've been colonized, and your land was taken over, now you can rise back up on the decolonization post-laminium per consequenti and take back the territory as the name is on the treaty, and the name on the treaty, the name on the treaty, Top Cats, is Empire Morocco, that's the name on the treaty. And a Sultan will be sitting at the head of state, we're gonna vote for a Sultan very soon, Top Cats. We wanna vote for a Sultan very soon, uh, Dane Callaway. You must understand, Dr. G, that we're no longer procrastinating. All the Grand Sheiks have held us back, Dr. G, but the Moroccan states are moving forward, Dr. G. So when you keep saying, how are we gonna unite, the question is, under what jurisdiction, Dr. G? We gonna unite under the empire Morocco, because that's what the treaty said we're supposed to do. Barack Obama said we're in Morocco, 'cause he said the United States of America was recognized by Morocco, not recognized by Indians. So we're putting the, the state back together, one territory at a time, now check this out, Dr. G. Here's what happened in nineteen fifty-six. See Mohammed the Fifth, right, see at the top? Mohammed the Fifth of Morocco, right, who was Sultan, but he decided to step, step down and be a king. And he left the empire Morocco wide open, the state still exists, there's no one sitting in the seat of Sultan. And this is the problem the Moors have had since nineteen fifty-six, there's been no empire Morocco for us to return to. So we have to reestablish the government again and put the officers to sit in seat. Hey, uh, Brother Joseph.
Mohammed Al Kazim bin Yusef bin Hassan Al Alwi, Mohammed the Fifth. Tenth August nineteen oh nine through twenty-sixth February nineteen sixty-one was the last Sultan of Morocco from nineteen twenty-seven to nineteen fifty-three, and from nineteen fifty-five to nineteen fifty-seven. And first Kingdom of Morocco from nineteen fifty-seven to nineteen sixty-one. A member of the Awali dynasty, he played an instrumental role in securing the independence of Morocco from France and Spain.
Alright, pause right there, alright, let's just read the second paragraph.
Mohammed was enthroned as Sultan upon the death of his father Yusef bin Hassan in nineteen twenty-seven. Early in his reign, his approval of the Berber Dar drew widespread backlash and spurred an uprising of Moroccan nationalism in opposition to continued French rule.
Pause, so the France was colonizing the empire of Morocco, not the king of Morocco, but the empire Morocco, so what happened? So Mohammed the Fifth stepped down, you see right there, he said Mohammed the Fifth was the last Sultan. Mohammed the Fifth was the last Sultan, when he stepped down, nineteen fifty-six. So when he become king, it said he became king where? He became what? He became the first king of Morocco in nineteen fifty-seven, you see that? This is what all the Moors have to understand, there was no Sultan past nineteen fifty-six. So the Moors were unable to fulfill the obligations and instructions of the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. Article fifteen, paragraph one, said the Moors had to return to Morocco, but what about Morocco? The empire Morocco, well, dang, we couldn't come back to the empire, 'cause there was no government for us to pledge our application to. How is we gonna turn an application into the empire Morocco if there was no government? So we had to start doing what? Establishing, would depositate small little parcels of land, such as Ampac as an example, we took over the territory coming on this Colorado, right? And called it now Lordium Moorish Premium Ante Colorado on behalf of the empire Morocco for the small territory that we're in, right? Small territory. But across the nation, there's several Moroccan states popping up, right? So we're all in pieces like Humpty Dumpty, but we gotta come back together and hold through what? The empire Morocco, and we're gonna reestablish it. This is what the Grand Sheiks have been stopping us from doing. The Grand Sheiks literally been telling all the Moors they're Americans, instead of telling the Moors they're what? Moroccans in Morocco, this is the problem. Alright, Top Cats, so the, so the last Sultan was in nineteen fifty-six. And it's been void of a government ever since, Top Cats. And I'm gonna say this for the record. You see, I don't blame Top Cats, Rod Hayes, Red Bird, Dane Callaway, Young Elder. I don't blame them for this whole Indian crap they're doing, you know why? Because they themselves was not created in a vacuum. These people talking about this Indian stuff was created because the Moors failed to follow the instructions of our own treaties to restore the empire Morocco, we've had since nineteen forty-five to return to the empire Morocco when there was actually a Sultan. When the Charter came out in nineteen forty-five, the Charter, Article seventy-three allowed us to establish our government, but we didn't do it, we didn't read the Charter. And then after nineteen fifty-six, the Moor Science Temple and all these Grand Sheiks could have easily helped the Moors to restore the empire Morocco after nineteen fifty-six. But they didn't do it, they too busy running around collecting tidings and selling books and apparel. And this is why Rod Hayes and Red Bird and Dane Callaway exist today, because the Moors failed, the all the black people who should have been, should have been called Moors by now. The Moor Science Temple and the civic Moors with Taj Sri Bay, all the Grand Sheiks have been stopping the Moors from rising up to put the empire Morocco back together. Go look at C M Bay's Constitution. C M Bay's Constitution, Zodiac Constitution, guess what? It don't mention the word Morocco, and it don't mention the word Moroccan in it, nowhere. How the heck you gonna call the Constitution, it's not even telling you the name of the land or the nationality of the people, 'cause the nationality is Moroccans in Morocco. So C M Bay's Constitution don't mention Morocco or Moroccan. Go look at the Moor Science Temple's Constitution, it don't mention the word Morocco or Moroccan. It don't even mention the word more. So how the heck are we gonna rise up as a people, and you're not even telling the people the name of the land is Morocco in your constitution? And the nationality is Moroccan. But instead, you're saying we're Moorish American, and Moorish American is a hybrid. It's a compound adjective that does not describe a nationality. Because the nationality is extended to, to you by who? A state. So we've been bamboozled, hoodwinked, and led astray by these leaders, this has to stop. The only reason why Rod Hayes exists today is because the Moors failed the people. We've delayed our own justice, we as Moors have to take accountability that we created these people such as Rod Hayes, because we too busy procrastinating, 'cause we too busy worried about cash app and selling books and nationality cards through fake websites such as R B Bay Publications. We gotta stop doing this to ourselves. By now, this word Indian should not even be in our vocabulary or lexicon, because Moors have always known we're Moors ever since Noble Droualie told us in nineteen thirteen. We sit here in twenty twenty-four and Noble told us we were descendants of Moroccans, that we're in the Moroccan empire, and that the Sultan is the ruler, and what are we doing? We're saying we're Americans in America. Instead of saying we're Moroccans in Morocco. We've been sold out by the leaders, there wouldn't be no Rod Hayes and Dane Callaway if the Moors had done their job to enforce the treaty, but Taj Sri Bay won't even read the Treaty of Madrid out loud. None of the Grand Sheiks will read the Act of the Sarahs of nineteen oh six out loud. They won't read the Treaty Affairs of nineteen twelve out loud. They won't read the International Court of Justice case of France versus United States of America out loud. They won't read the United Nations Charter out loud. They won't read Resolution fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty out loud. They won't read Resolution fifteen forty-one of nineteen sixty-one out loud, and all these things about decolonization. And not one of the Grand Sheiks read this out loud. What does that tell you? You think that's just a coincidence? That none of the Grand Sheiks, whether they're temple or civic, read international law out loud? You gotta see, we've been sold out, that's the reason why Rod Hayes exist. Because our failure is Moors, but that's coming to an end. We're starting to get into the eleventh hour, the Moroccan states are gonna put an end to this type of propaganda. Since the Grand Sheiks didn't wanna get the job done, then the rest of the Moors have an obligation to move the Grand Sheiks out the way, and the Moroccan states are gonna rise up and put an end to this propaganda through our Moroccan laws, you see this? Moroccan laws. And our Moroccan Council Court will put an end to this, this propaganda. It's going to stop, it's gonna stop selling out our people, it's continuing. You see this flag, this is the empire Morocco flag, this is what we're reestablishing. We are reestablishing the empire Morocco, because the flag all the Moors keep using right now, listen to me, Moors. Look, look, you see this word right here, I'm gonna click on it, see Kingdom of Morocco, watch this, King of Morocco. Look at that, that's the flag of the Kingdom of Morocco, that's not the flag of the Moors. That's the Kingdom of Morocco's flag way over in the east. That flag does not provide any protections for Moors. Go read the Kingdom of Morocco's Constitution of the year twenty eleven, and you won't see the word empire, more, Moorish, or Sultan in it, nowhere. It doesn't provide protections for no Moors whatsoever, we've been lied to, we've been deceived. We gotta stop doing this to ourselves. The Moors needed their own, in order to reestablish the empire Morocco again, the empire needed its own flag to represent the people. All the Moroccans who returned, who returned to Morocco come under this flag. Everybody else that's standing in the United States of America comes under stars and stripes, that's the truth. Now, if you pledge your allegiance to some Cherokee nation for whatever silly reason, and they accept your application to be on the registration, then you come under the flag of the Cherokees. The Moorish Americans don't have no flag. The Moorish Americans are using the flag of the Kingdom of Morocco instead of the flag of the empire. But now we have an empire flag, there it is, whether you like it or not, but guess what? That flag represents who? Moroccans that the Moroccan state recognizes. If you haven't returned to Morocco, then don't worry about this flag, 'cause you ain't Moroccan anyway, 'cause the Moroccan state has to recognize you. However, the Moroccan states have their arms wide open, say, come home. The treaty gives you a right to return to Morocco and pledge your allegiance to the entire submission to the laws of the empire. So come home, Moors, and stop going for the banana tailpipe to say you're Indians. Listen, we just getting started, I ain't done, we just getting started, I ain't done. Listen up, Dr. G, don't fall asleep on me, don't fall asleep on me, Dr. G, here we go. What we got up here? This is a map of Oklahoma. When we're talking jurisdiction, it's in layers. So you got the United States of America, Oklahoma, that's the jurisdiction. Then you got all the tribes, the reservations, it's in layers. So this layer they're showing you right here is all the what? The Indian reservations. You see, so it's in layers, you got United States of America, right, Oklahoma, then you got what? All the, the Indian reservations. But keep in mind, Indian reservations and the several union states are, are not equivalent, but they're similar because they're both internal, both on both. Oklahoma and all internal reservations are states, reservations, Cherokee nation is a state, but it's an internal state of the United States of America. Oklahoma is an internal state of the United States of America. So both of them are similar, not equal, but they're similar because they're both states sharing a jurisdiction, okay? Now watch this. I'm gonna show you something, Dr. G, I'm talking law, I'm talking treaties. We're gonna talk about the treaty, Dr. G, of the Cherokee of eighteen sixty-six. Class one thirty-seven, I told you about this, right, so we're gonna talk about the Treaty of Cherokee. We're gonna talk about the Treaty of the Creeks, okay? Follow me, we're gonna talk about the Treaties of the Seminoles of eighteen sixty-six. Then we're gonna talk about the Treaty of the Choctaw and the Chickasaw of eighteen sixty-six. Alright, we're gonna get into this, Dr. G, because Rod Hayes, Red Bird not gonna tell you about this. Dane Callaway not gonna tell you about this, Top Cats not gonna read these treaties out loud to you. Young Elder not gonna read treaties out loud, Treaty Supreme Law of the Land, not everybody just running they mouth. Where are the treaties at? Read the treaties out loud, you say you Indian? Stand on there and say it with your chest and read these treaties out loud, I dare you. Okay, so what we gonna do is gonna jump down to subsections that talk about who? The freedmen who were adopted. Therefore freedmen are who? Moors. Who are falsely being called what? Negroes, blacks, and Africans. But their nationality is Moroccans. But they call them freedmen, Negroes, blacks, and Africans. That must be understood. So in class one thirty-seven, we learned that Maxine Waddell was trying to tell the quote-unquote "black" people to go be what? Indians. You see? That's an adoption. So if you being adopted, that mean that's not your real family. So let's learn what happened in eighteen sixty-six, shall we? Let's talk treaties. Keep in mind, treaties are what? A subject of international law. Not just you running your mouth. Let's talk international law. Okay, from the top, uh, brother, uh, Dre.
United States of America Treaty with the Cherokee in eighteen sixty-six.
Okay, pause. Okay, so we're gonna jump down. We're gonna jump down, okay? Article four. I'm listening.
Article four, "All the Cherokees and freed persons who were formerly slaves to any Cherokee and all free Negroes, not having been such slaves who resided in the Cherokee Nation prior to June first, eighteen hundred and sixty-one."
Pause. Read it again.
Article four, "All the Cherokees and freed persons who were formerly slaves to any Cherokee and all free Negroes, not having been such slaves who resided in the Cherokee Nation prior to June first, eighteen hundred and sixty-one."
Pause. So first of all, you see how they making distinctions? They say, first they say what? This is how you have to read, Dr. G. We gotta learn how to break it down. Read means to use forensics, right? Check it out. "All the Cherokees." Then they throw the word "and." You see that? "And free persons," so they making two legal personalities. They're not trying to say all Cherokees. They're trying to say Cherokees and freed persons. Then they turn around and tell you who the freed persons are, right? They said freed persons who were formerly slaves to any Cherokee Nation. Then they say, okay, well, who are the slaves? They said, "And all free Negroes." So all the Negroes are the slaves. They're not Cherokees. They were slaves. But wait a minute. Didn't we look up the word Moor? Didn't it say blacks and Negroes are what? Moors. So if you see the word Negro in a Cherokee treaty, they're really talking about who? Moors. Moors. Who are the slaves? But they don't wanna use the word Moor. They'd rather say what? Negro. Or they say what? Freed, freedmen or freed person. You gotta catch what they're doing. They hate saying the word Moor out loud. They didn't wanna call Dread Scott a Moor. They just called him what? Negro, correct? Isn't that what they called Dread Scott a Negro? Okay. Etymology dictionary said Negroes and blacks are who? Moors. Dread Scott was a Moor, i.e. Moroccan. All right, let's continue. This is the Cherokee tree. Read it out loud, Top Cat. Read it out loud, Dane Callaway. All right, let's, let's scroll on down. Let's scroll down. Article nine. Okay, I'm listening.
Article, article nine. "The Cherokee Nation having voluntarily in February eighteen hundred and sixty-three by an act of the national council forever about slavery hereby covenant and agreed that never hereafter shot either slavery or involuntary servitude exist in their nation otherwise than in the punishment of crime, whereof the party shall have been duly convicted in accordance with laws applicable to all the members of said tribe alike. They further agree that all freedmen who have been liberated by voluntary act of their former owners or by law as well as all freed colored persons who were in the country at the commencement of the rebellion and are now residents therein or who may return within six months and their descendants shall have all the rights of native Cherokees, provided that owners of slaves so emancipated in the Cherokee Nation shall never receive any compensation or pay for the slaves so emancipated."
So therefore, the Cherokee owned slaves and the slave, slaves are who? Colored persons. Colored, meaning black, i.e. Negro. And Etymology dictionary says blacks and Negroes are who? Moors. This is just too easy. So therefore, these people run around saying we're Indians are lying to you because really they're what? Moors if they're classified them as colored persons, Negroes, freedmen, and Africans. They're Moors. This is too easy. Listen. Let's go now to the Creek, uh, uh, treaty, all right? From the top, from Dre.
The United States of America Treaty with the Creek in eighteen sixty-six.
Pause. Let's scroll it down, okay? Scroll down. Article two. I'm listening.
Article two, "Slavery not to exist among the Creeks. Rights of those of African descent. The Creeks hereby covenant and agree that henceforth neither slavery nor involuntary servitude otherwise than in the punishment of crimes whereof the party shall have been duly convicted in accordance with laws applicable to all members of said tribe shall never exist in said nation and inasmuch as there are among the Creeks many persons of African descent who have no interest in the soil. It is stipulated that hereafter these persons lawfully residing in said Creeks country under their laws and usages or who have been thus residing in said country and may return within one year from the ratification of this treaty and their descendants and such others of the same race as may be permitted by the laws of the said nation to settle within the limits of the jurisdiction of the Creek Nation as citizens thereof shall have and enjoy all the rights and privileges of native citizens including an equal interest in the soil and national funds. And the laws of the said nation shall be equally binding upon and give equal protection to all such persons and all others of whatsoever race or color who may be adopted as citizens or members of said tribe."
So therefore, the freedmen, the Negro, the Africans are all adopted citizens of the Creek Nation. Therefore, United States of America was trying to ask the Creek Nation to adopt too. Moors, you see that? So therefore, you come on adoption of a Creek Nation or a Cherokee Nation, that means what? That ain't your real family. That makes you, that means you ain't Indian. Because we looked up the word black, it meant what? Moor, black or Moor. We looked at the word Moor and it says Negroes and blacks are Moors. And all of the Moors have been adopted as citizens. This is the treaty we're reading, not a book. Reading the treaty. I dare these people who call themselves to be Indians, these fake five-dollar dark-skinned people, five-dollar Indians claiming to be Indians. You ain't Indian? You're a Moor. You're just trying to make money off packet selling and you yourself, yourself still a citizen of the United States. This is shameful what we do to our people. We're hustling our own people selling them fake books, apparel, all this BS just to make two cents on a dollar. We're selling our people out. We're not Indians. Right here it says we're adopted as citizens of a Cherokee or Creek tribe. Listen. Article three.
Article three, um, "Session of lands to the United States. Payment therefore and mode of payment in compliance with the desire of the United States to locate other Indians and freedmen thereon, the Creeks hereby cede and convey to the United States to be sold to and used as homes for such other civilized Indians as the United States may choose to settle thereon, the west half of their entire domain."
Pause. So. Read it again. Article three.
Article three, "Session of lands to the United States. Payment therefore and mode of payment in compliance with the desire of the United States to locate and other Indians and freedmen thereon, the Creeks hereby cede and convey to the United States to be sold to and used as homes for other civilized Indians as the United States and choose to settle thereon, the west half of their entire domain."
Pause. So therefore, see they making distinctions between Indians and freedmen. See that? Why would they need to keep saying freedmen? Because freedmen are really the Moors. They're not Indians. They're making distinctions. So that's the Creeks. The Creeks have adopted the Moors. Okay, let's go to the Seminoles from the top, from Dre.
The United States of America Treaty with the Seminole in eighteen sixty-six.
Pause. Let's come on down. This is the treaty we're reading. Tell Red Bird to read this out loud to show that all the black people were adopted as Indians. That ain't your family. From the top.
Article two, "Slavery not to exist among the Seminoles. Rights of those of African descent. The Seminole Nation covenant that henceforth that said nation's slavery shall not exist nor involuntary servitude except for and in punishment of crime whereof the offending party shall first have been duly convicted in accordance with law applicable to all the members of said nation. And inasmuch as there are among the Seminoles many persons of African descent and blood who have no interest or property in the soil and no recognized civil rights, it is stipulated that hereafter these persons and their descendants and such other of the same race as shall be permitted by said nation to settle there shall have and enjoy all the rights of native citizens and the laws of said nation shall be equally binding upon all persons of whatever race or color who may be adopted as citizens or members of said tribe."
So the Seminoles have adopted the Africans, i.e. the Moors. You see that? You ain't Indian. You're Moors who've been adopted as Seminos. You see that? Why don't Top Cat tell everybody this? Rod Hayes not gonna tell you this. Dane Callaway not gonna read these treaties out loud. You gotta understand what's happening. The Moors are being sold out by their own people. Listen, go to another treaty. From the top, brother Dre.
The United States of America Treaty with the Choctaw and Chickasha in eighteen sixty-six.
Uh-huh. So now we're talking about Choctaw, Chickasaw. Okay, let's read this treaty out loud that nobody wants to read. Okay, I'm listening.
Article three, "The Choctaws and Chickashaws in consideration of the sum of three hundred thousand dollars hereby cede to the United States the territory west of the ninety-eight degrees west longitude known as the least district provided that the said sum shall be invested and held by the United States and an interest not less than five percent in trust for the said nations until the legislators of the Choctaw and Chickasha nations respectively shall have made such laws, rules, and regulations as may be necessary to give all persons of African descent resident in the said nation at the date of the Treaty of Fort Smith and the descendants heretofore held in slavery among said nations on the rights, privileges, and immunities including the right of suffrage of citizens of said nations except in the annuities, monies, and public domain claimed by or belonging to said nations respectively. And also to give to such persons who were residents as aforesaid and their descendants forty acres each of the land of said nations on the same terms as the Choctaws and Chickashaws to be selected on the survey of said land after the Choctaws and Chickashaws said and Kansas Indians have made their selections as herein provided and immediately on the enactment of such laws, rules, and regulations the said sum of three hundred thousand dollars shall be paid to the said Choctaw and Chickasha nations in the proportion of three-fourths to the former and one-fourth to the latter less such sum at the rate of one hundred dollars per capita as shall be sufficient to pay such persons of African descent before referred to as within ninety days after the passage of such laws, rules, and regulations shall elect to remove and actually remove from the said nations respectively. And should the said laws, rules, and regulations not be made by the legislators of the said nations respectively within two years from the ratification of this treaty, then the said sum of three hundred thousand dollars shall cease to be held in trust for the said Choctaw and Chickasha nations and be held for the use and benefit of such of said persons of African descent as the United States shall remove from the said territory in such manner as the United States shall deem proper. The United States agreeing within ninety days from the expiration of the said two years to remove from said nations all such persons of African descent as may be willing to remove those remaining or returning after have, having been removed from said nations to have no benefit of said sum of three hundred thousand dollars or any part thereof but shall be upon the same footing as other citizens of the United States and the said nations."
So therefore, United States got a right to remove Moors from any Choctaw nation because the Moors are adopted as Indians. Therefore, the United States reserved the right to remove Moors from the dang on territories any time they wanted because these people ain't really Indians. They ain't really Creek. They're not really Cherokee. They're not really Semino. They're not really Choctaw or Chickasaw. So the United States knew they could just snatch Moors out of those territories whenever they wanted to. And all these so-called Indian reservations also have a right to remove the Moors from the territories as well. Listen.
Article four. "The said nations further agree that all Negroes not otherwise disqualified or disabled shall be competent witnesses in all civil and criminal suits and proceedings in the Choctaw and Chickasha courts. Any law to the contrary notwithstanding, and they fully recognize the right of the freedmen to a fair remuneration on reasonable and equitable contracts for their labor which the law should aid them to enforce, and they agree on the part of their respective nations that all laws shall be equal in their operation upon Choctaws, Chickashaws, and Negroes and that no distinction affecting the latter shall at any time be made and that they shall be treated with kindness and be protected against injury. And they further agree that while the said freedmen now in the Choctaw and Chickasha nations remain in said nations respectively, they shall be entitled to as much land as they may cultivate for the support of themselves and families in cases where they do not support themselves and families by hiring, not interfering with existing improvements without the consent of the occupant. It being understood that in the event of the making of the laws, rules, and regulations aforesaid, the forty acres aforesaid shall stand in place of the land cultivated as last foresaid."
Okay, so that's the last article. So therefore, you see how they making distinctions? Choctaws, Chickasaws, and Negroes. Because the Negroes are who? Moors. You're not Indians. You gotta see, we just read out what? Four treaties, right? Cherokee, Creek, Semino, and what? Chickasaw, Choctaw. And all these treaties are what? From what? Eighteen sixty-six. Where the United States went, went in to reconstruct these treaties to let the Moors become adopted citizens of these Indian tribes. But the Moors aren't really Indians. This is why they're writing this provisions in the treaty, say, "We can really kick these Moors out whenever we want" because they really ain't Indians. You gotta see what's happening, why they call, keep calling them Negroes, freedmen, and Africans. They don't wanna call them real Cherokees and Creeks and Seminos and Choctaw, Chickasaws. Gotta see what's happening. Okay, okay, Dr. G. I promise, this is the last one. I know I kept you up for a while. I know you're a little dizzy right now. I know this is, you know, a little overwhelming, but we need to go through this, Dr. G. Because you talking about trying to unite people, but unite them under what jurisdiction? You gonna, we gonna unite as Indians? No, because we ain't really Indians. We can't unite as citizens of the United States of America because everybody wanna get out that jurisdiction because they know they're colonized. Then guess what? By process elimination, there's only one jurisdiction left, Dr. G. That's the empire Morocco. So we all have to unite under umbrella of the empire Morocco because all the blacks, Negroes, freedmen, and Africans are actually Moors. So we gotta stop thinking it, Dr. G, like you're really gonna sit down and talk to some so-called Indians. We're not Indians. And we're not Moorish Americans either. That's a hybrid, compound adjective. The name of the state is empire Morocco for Moroccan. We're Moroccans, Dr. G. Okay, last one, Dr. G, I promise. Here we go. Now, what is this? This is a case from the federal courts. Dealing with who? Freedmen and the Chickasaw Nation. So the Chickasaw Indians was trying to kick the Moors out. Said, "No, no, no, get, get them about here." You see? So the United States is taking them to court. Gotta see what's happening. We're gonna read a few pages, all right? From the top.
Excuse me. "United States versus the Choctaw Nation and the Chickasaw Nation." Uh, the Chickasaw Freedman versus the Choctaw Nation and the Chickasaw Nation.
Pause. So right there. The freedmen were suing the Choctaw Nation because the freedmen wanna call themselves Chickasaws. But they know that these freedmen are really Moors, so these Moors are trying to force themselves to be descendants and have rights as Indians. But the reality is you what? Adopted. You really adopted. So you really got privileges instead of rights. You see? So now the United States coming in and now doing what? The United States versus the Choctaw Nation and the Chickasaw Nation. To start to see if these treaties is still enforceable. To make sure these Moors remain as Indians, cause the United States don't want the Moors to find out that they're Moors, i.e. Moroccans where? In Morocco, cause Morocco has the highest status of jurisdiction over the United States of America. Right? Okay, let's read a few pages, from the top again, bro.
United States versus the Choctaw Nation and the Chickasaw Nation. The Chickasaw uh Freedman versus the Choctaw Nation and the Chickasaw Nation. Appeals from the Court of Claims. Uh argued January twenty sixth and the twenty seventh nineteen oh four and which was decided on February twenty third nineteen oh four. The provisions of the Treaty of July tenth eighteen sixty six between the United States and the Chickasha. And Choctaw Indians in regard to the Chickasaw Freedmen were not complied with. Either by the Indians who did not confer any rights on the Freedmen. Or by the United States which did not remove any of the Freedmen from the territory of the Indians. Freedmen were never adopted into the Chickasaw Nation or acquired any rights dependent on such adoption. And are not entitled to allotments in Choctaw and Chickasha uh lands as members thereof. And not having removed from the territory are not entitled to any beneficial interest in the three hundred thousand fund referred to in the treaty. Which in case they were not adopted into the Chickasaw Nation was to be held in trust for such of the Freedmen. And only such as removed from the territory.
You see that? So the Chickasaw said, well, we really didn't end up adopting these Moors. So therefore, we don't owe them no benefits, you see what's happening? See the word adopted, adopted, adopted. Is Rare Bird gonna read this out loud? No. Dane Callaway gonna read this out loud? No. Rod Hayes gonna read this out loud? No. Is Top Cat's gonna read this out loud? No. Is Young Elder gonna read this out loud? No. Cause they don't want the quote-unquote black people to find out that you ain't Indian, you were adopted. As Indians, that mean that ain't your real family, what's your real family then, black people? You're what? Moors in Morocco. That's your true nationality, you're Moroccans, let's continue.
Under the subsequent agreement of nineteen oh two and not independently thereof. The Freedmen became entitled to land equal to forty acres of the average land of the Choctaws and Chickashaws. The Indians to be con- uh the Indians to be compensated therefore by the United States Congress. Having by the agreement of nineteen oh two provided for them in this manner. In case it should be as it is determined in this case that they are not entitled otherwise to allotments in the Choctaw and Chickasha lands. These are cross appeals from a decree of the the Court of Claims. Entered into suit brought under an agreement between the United States and the Choctaw and the Chickasha Indians. Made March twenty first nineteen oh two and ratified and affirmed by the Act of July first nineteen oh two. Uh thirty-two stacks, six forty-one and six forty-nine. The controversy is as to the relations of the Chickasha Freedmen to the Chickasha Nation. In the rights of such Freedmen independent of such agreement. In the lands of the said Indian nations under the third article of the Treaty of eighteen sixty six.
And which we already read, continue.
Between the United States and the said nations and. Under any and all laws subsequently enacted by the Chickasha Legislature or by Congress. There is no dispute about the facts, there are substantially as follows. By Treaty of October twenty eighteen thirty-two, the Chickasha Indians ceded to the United States. For the purpose of sale their land east of the Mississippi River and later were permitted to migrate west of that river. By the treaty between the Choctaw and Chickasha Tribes of June seventeen eighteen thirty-seven. The Chickasha Tribe was permitted to occupy with the Choctaw, with the Choctaw Tribe. Certain territory within the United States. The United States confirming the treaty and such occupation by our treaty with the tribes June twenty-second eighteen fifty-five. By this treaty, the lands were guaranteed to the members of the Choctaw and Chickasha Tribes. Their heirs and successors to be held in common. So that each and every member of either tribe shall have an equal undivided interest in the whole. By said treaty, the tr- said tribes leased to the United States all that proportion. Uh excuse me, all that portion of their common territory west of the ninetieth ninety-eight degree of west la- of west longitude. For the settlement of the Wichita and other tribes of Indians. Leased territory was also to be opened to the settlement by Choctaws and Chickashaws. This is the leased district herein after referred to. The Choctaws and Chickashaws are separate nations. Upon the breaking out of the Civil War, they entered into relations with the Southern Confederacy and took up arms against the United States. On January first eighteen sixty-three, the President of the United States in pursuance of the Proclamation of September twenty-second eighteen sixty-two. Issued a proclamation abolishing slavery.
You see that? So so the Choctaws and Chickasaws are holding on to slaves, which they call Freedmen's. But the slaves were who? Moors. That they call Freedmen's, Negroes, Africans, et cetera, you see? Continue.
The appellants in number three twenty-three are the survivors or descendants of the slaves held by the Chickasha Nation and number about. Nine thousand sixty-six. The Creeks, Cherokees and Seminoles also rebelled against the United States. And on the tenth of September eighteen sixty-five, a treaty was entered into at Fort Smith, Arkansas. Between them said Chickashaws and um Choctaws and Chickashaws and the United States. By which they and the said Choctaws and Chickashaws renewed their allegiance to the United States. And acknowledged themselves to be under the protection of the United States.
Pause, so therefore, the Choctaws and Chickasaws renewed their allegiance to the United States. That means, Dr. G, when you say, well, how are we going to, right, come together and unite? And talk about how we move forward, but the reality is the Indian tribes are in alignment with the United States. So if they're pledging allegiance to the United States, that mean the only thing we can talk about, Dr. G, is how do we unite as? Moors in Empire Morocco, because the Indian nations are trying to unite with Moors. Because they're under allegiance of the United States of America, and United States of America are colonists. So the colonists in the Indian tribes have an allegiance to each other. So anything these so-called Indians can do to got dark faces is actually follow the instructions to come back to Empire Morocco, we can't unite as Indians. That's a totally different jurisdiction that's pled allegiance to the United States to come under their jurisdiction, under protection status. Let's continue. Right here.
Uh Choctaws and Chickashaws renewed their allegiance to the United States. And acknowledged themselves to be under the protection of the United States. And covenanted and agreed that there thereafter, they would in all things recognize. The government of the United States, which should exercise uh exclusive jurisdiction over them.
Pause, read it again. Of the government of the United States.
Government of the United States, which should exercise exclusive jurisdiction over them.
So therefore, the Indian tribes recognize that the United States has jurisdiction over them. This is what I've been teaching the Moors. This is what I'm trying to tell black people. This is what I'm trying to tell you when Maxine Waters tells you to go be Indian. She knows that the United States has jurisdiction over all Indian tribes. Maxine Water Waters is is trying to subjugate you even further under the United States. You gotta see what's happening here. Rare Bird, Rod Hayes, Dane Callaway, Top Cats, Young Elder and the like. All these black people are operating on what's called COINTELPRO, which is counterintelligence. Program that counterintelligence is what? To tell you you're Indian. Instead of telling you that you're a Moor. And they know that the United States has jurisdiction over all Indian tribes. And the Indian tribes recognize themselves coming under jurisdiction of the United States, they sold out. Gotta understand what's happening here. Okay, from here.
The United States on its part. Promised to afford ample protection for the security of the persons and property of the respective nations or tribes. The treaty was ratified by the legislator of the Chickasha Nation. A treaty was concluded between the United States and the Choctaw and Chickasha um Chickasha Indians. And proclaimed July tenth eighteen sixty-six. It provided among other things as follows. Article two, the Choctaws and Chickashaws hereby covenant and agree that henceforth neither slavery nor involuntary servitude. Otherwise then in punishment of crime, whereof the party shall have been duly convicted. In accordance with laws applicable to all members of the particular nation shall ever exist in said nations. Article three, the Choctaws and Chickashaws in consideration of the sum of three hundred thousand dollars. Hereby cede to the United States the territory west of ninety-eight degrees west longitude known as the leased district. Provide that the said sum shall be invested and held by the United States and an interest not less than five percent. In trust for the said nations until the legislators of the Choctaw and Chickasha nations respectively. Shall have made such laws, rules and regulations as may be necessary to give all the persons of African descent. Resident in the said nations at the date of the Treaty of Fort Smith and their descendants. Heretofore held in slavery among said nations on the rights, privileges and immunities. Including the right of suffrage of citizens of said nations.
Pause, so all the Africans, i.e. Negroes, i.e. blacks, i.e. Freedmen's. Who are actually Moors now became what? Citizens of these tribes as adopted people, you see what's hap- Now, we already read over the treaty, so we don't, we don't need to read these articles, okay, let's skip down. Let's skip down, okay, right there.
On November ninth eighteen sixty-six, the Chickasha Legislature passed an act. Declaring it to be the unanimous desire of the legislature that the United States holds the share of the Chickasha Nation in the three hundred thousand dollars stipulated. For the session of the leased district for the benefit of the Chickasha Freedmen. And remove them beyond the limits of the Chickasha Nation according to the third article of the Treaty of eighteen sixty-six. In eighteen sixty-eight, similar action was taken by the Chickasha Legislature. Asking for the removal by the United States of the Chickasha Freedmen from the Chickasha country.
Say that again, repeat again.
In eighteen sixty-eight, similar action was taken by the Chickasha Legislature. Asking for the removal by the United States of the Chickasha Freedmen from the Chickasha country.
Why, so why in eighteen sixty-eight are the Chickasaws asking the United States to remove the Freedmen from their territory? Because the Fourteenth Amendment came out in eighteen sixty-eight, making what? Moors citizens of the United States of America. Under the Fourteenth Amendment, right, it's protected persons, Fourteenth Amendment, United States Constitution, eighteen sixty-eight. So the Chickasaw says, wait, well, United States, since you recognizing these Moors. As this United States of America. Then you need to come get them from this Indian territory and take them over there to the United States with you. You see what's happening? You know why they can say that to the United States? Because we ain't Indians, that's why they can say it. We were adopted temporarily. Let's continue.
January tenth eighteen seventy-three, the Chickasha Legislature passed an art, uh excuse me, passed an act. By which the Freedmen were declared to be adopted in conformity with the third article of the Treaty of eighteen sixty-six.
Pause, read it again.
January tenth eighteen seventy-three, the Chickasha Legislature passed an act. By which the Freedmen were declared to be adopted in conformity with the third article of the Treaty of eighteen sixty-six.
Wait, I thought we was Indians, why do we need to be adopted and we were already Indians, you see what's happening? We reading this from the United States federal courts. We already went over the treaty, so now the United States federal courts are looking at these treaty tools to look at what? Interpretations of law, treaty law. I'm not making this stuff up. United States knows you're adopted Indians. The Indian reservation know you're adopted as well, therefore, you're adopted, what was your original nationality? It was what? Moroccan in Morocco, the empire of Morocco. The United States and the conspiracy with the Indians are trying to hide, all these Moors are trying to hide Dred Scott's true identity, you see what's happening? Alright, continue.
Um certain conditions were expressed and it was provided that the act. Should be in full force and effect from and after its approval by the proper authority of the United States. That act was transmitted by the governor of the Chickasha Nation by letter of the same date. To the President of the United States and was submitted by the Secretary of the Interior. To the Speaker of the House of Representatives on February tenth eighteen seventy-three. With recommendation for appropriate legislation for extending the time for the ex- uh for the execution of the third article of the treaty. The papers were referred to the Committee on Freedmen Affairs, but no action thereon was had at that time. In October eighteen seventy-six or eighteen seventy-seven, another act was passed, section three of which was as follows. Section three, being further enacted that the provisions contained in article three of the said treaty giving the Chickasha Legislature. The choice of receiving and appropriating the three hundred thousand dollars therein named for the use and benefit. When passing such laws, rules and regulations as will give all persons of African descent certain rights and privileges. Being in as hereby declared to be the unanimous consent of the Chickasha Legislature. That the United States shall keep and hold said sum of three hundred thousand dollars for the benefit of the said Negroes. And the governor of the Chickasha Nation is hereby requested to notify the government of the United States. That it is the wish of the legislator of the Chickasha Nation. That the government of the United States remove the said Negroes beyond the limits of the Chickasha Nation.
Pause. Read it again from here, it is.
Uh nation is by, here is hereby requested to notify the government of the United States. That it is the wish of the legislator of the Chickasha Nation that the government of the United States remove the said Negroes. Beyond the limits of the Chickasha Nation.
So they want the United States to do what? Read again.
Re- uh they want the United States remove the said Negroes beyond the limits of the Chickasha Nation.
So how is it, if you claiming you Indian, you standing on that square, it's based in what? It's it's based in what? Falshood. It's a privilege and not a right because you ain't Chickasaw. You ain't Choctaw, you ain't Cherokee, you ain't Creek and you ain't Semino. Cause that these Indians are telling the United States, get these Moors a heck about these territories. And take them over there under the Fourteenth Amendment. You see what's happening? If that was your real family, no way your real family will be trying to put you in the hands of the United States of America. Yeah, see what's happening here, this is on the record of the United States, why ain't anybody reading this out loud, continue.
According to the requirements of the third article of the Treaty of April twenty-eighth eighteen sixty-six. And that passed October twenty-second eighteen eighty-five provided inter alia as follows. Section one, being enacted by the legislator of the Chickasha Nation. That the Chickasha people hereby refuse to accept or adopt the Freedmen as citizens of the Cherokee Nation. Upon any terms or conditions whatever and respectfully request the governor of our nation to notify the Department. And Washington of the action of the legislator in the premises.
Read it again, section one.
Section one, being enacted by the legislator of the Cho- uh Chickasha Nation. That the Chickasha people hereby refuse to accept or adopt the Freedmen. As citizens of the Cherokee Nation.
Pause, read it again.
Section one, being enacted by the legislator of the Chickasha Nation. That the Chickasha people hereby refuse to accept or adopt the Freedmen as citizens of the Cherokee Nation.
Continue.
Upon any terms or conditions whatever and respectfully request the governor of our nation to notify the Department at Washington. Of the action of the legislator in the premises.
You ain't Indian, continue.
Section two, being further enacted that the governor is hereby authorized and directed to appoint two competent and. Discreet men of good judgment and business qualifications to visit Washington City, DC. During the next session of Congress and memorialize that body to provide a means of removal. Of the Freedmen from the Chickasha Nation to the country known as Oklahoma. In the Indian Territory or to make some suitable disposition of the Freedmen question. So that they may not be forced upon at uh uh on us as equal citizens of the Chickasha Nation.
Read it again.
Section two, uh being further enacted that the governor is hereby authorized and directed to appoint two competent and discreet men. Of good judgment and businesses and business qualifications to visit Washington City, DC. During the next session of Congress and memorialize that body to provide a means of removal of the Freedmen. From the Chickasha Nation to the country known as Oklahoma. In the Indian Territory or to make some suitable disposition of the Freedmen question. So that they be not forced upon us as equal citizens of the Chickasha Nation.
So you ain't Indian, let's continue.
Congress took no action until August fifteenth. Congress took no action until August fifteenth, eighteen ninety-four, when it passed an act, section eighteen of which provided that the approval of Congress is hereby given to an act to adopt the Negroes of the Chickasha Nation.
Pause. Read it again.
Congress took no action until August fifteenth, eighteen ninety-four, when it passed an act, section eighteen of which provided that the approval of Congress is hereby given to an act to adopt the Negroes of the Chickasha Nation.
Pause. So right then and there, Dr. G, I'm gonna end it there. That the approval of Congress, the United States is hereby given to an act to adopt the Negroes of the Chickasaw Nation. So therefore, the United States turn around and adopt the Moors to be Americans. Because Moors are not even Americans. You're adopted Americans, just like you were adopted Cherokees. You see what's happening? So therefore, you're adopted Americans, and you're adopted Cherokee, what was your original nationality? It is what? Moroccan. Moroccan is too easy. So as I started to close out, what, what should we learn from today's class? You, you gotta understand. We've been hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray by both these black people who are selling this falsehood narrative that we're Indians, and we're not Indians. But we're also being sold this narrative that we're Moors Americans, that we're not Moors Americans. We are Moroccans in Morocco. So therefore, Dr. G, listen to me, Dr. G. You got your, you've got your panelists coming up. Right, you got this panel, of Rare Bird, Tajmi Bay, Abdullah. You got Lamont and Yakub will come up April twenty-six through to twenty-eight. Guess what? You don't have to wait that long, Dr. G, to have this conversation with them about the truth. All you gotta do is ask me. I'll tell you the truth, or ask the WRC, because knowledge is free at the WRC. I am with that. Islam.